You're on, Mayor.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Monday, August 3, 2020. Before we have our pledge of allegiance, when they ask you to please rise for a brief moment of silence as we reflect back on brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces, they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women of the United States, of the Los Cruces Police Department and the Los Cruces Fire Department that keep our city safe 24/7/365. And then after that, we're gonna have a, I'd like to recognize the 23 members who lost their lives in the one-year anniversary of the shooting in El Paso at 10:39 this morning. I'm going to read the 23 names, and then we'll have a moment of silence for them. And then, after this moment here, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, and then I'll go to the names. Please join me in the pledge, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so earlier, the City of Las Cruces, specifically, I want to thank those who from our communications office and Parks and Rec and Maintenance for putting together, you're gonna see various trees throughout City Hall with orange ribbons, as well as 23 luminarios that will be, that are lit now, and also will be lit later this evening, for those who lost their lives in the El Paso shooting one year ago today. So I have here the list of the 23 names, and after I finish reading them, if you'd also please join me in a pledge. So those who lost their lives were Jordan Anchando, Andre Pablo Anchando, Arturo Benavides, Leonardo Campos Jr., Maridel Campos, David Johnson, Maria Eugenia Pagarete Roth, Ivan Filiberto Manzano, Gloria Edma Marcus, Sarah Esther Regalado Moria, Adolfo Saros Hernandez, Javier Amid Rodriguez, Elsa Mendoza Delamora, Angelia Silva, Inglespie, Juan de Dios de las Craz Chiras, Jorge Calvio Garcia, Maria Flores, Raul Flores, Margie Record, Alexander Gerard Hoffman, Teresa Sanchez, Luis Alfonso Juarez, and Guillermo Memo Garcia. So if you please join me in the moment of silence for the 23 victims, please? Thank you. Now, we're gonna have our pet of the week, and Jennifer Martinez from our Communications Office will be introducing them.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Jennifer Martinez with the City's Communications Office, and I'm going to introduce you to our pet of the week, Zeke. This furry guy is great for any starter family. He is intelligent and empathetic, which makes him perfect for families or couples, and if they're looking for a friend to settle into a home environment quickly. He is gentle when held, loves to be caressed, and is also active enough to get you through the entire summer. The Animal Service Center hours of operation are Monday through Friday, noon to 6:00 PM, and on Saturday and Sunday, noon to 5:00 PM. You will be asked to make an appointment. If you do decide to go in, the phone number to call is 382-0018, and all adoption off-site events are canceled until further notice. There are, of course, limitations at the Animal Service Center. Again, you will need to go online if you're looking to adopt a pet. Each pet will have a number that you will, that will correspond to the pet. They are $25 each. The website you'll need to visit is ascmv.org/adoptions. Today, a reminder about reporting ordinance violations. If you do see one, call Central Dispatch. The number is 5260795. That is a non-emergency number, and you should use option number six, where you will be asked to provide the following information: the location of the violation, the type of offense, and the description of the animals, and of course, your contact information. Again, a quick COVID update. Information on our website can be found at covid19loscruces.com. You'll find some quick information along the left-hand side. Once you do get to that website, including updates from the Centers for Disease Control and from the Department of Health, of course, COVID VACs, behavioral health resources, links to the Governor's Public Health Orders, and also resources for family and youth, businesses and workers, and of course, seniors. So again, just go to that website, and you can find a bunch of information there, and so much more. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so we have one proclamation, and this is American Wind Week. So it's presented to Jessica Hunt. So Jessica, hopefully you're listening. Whereas wind energy is the largest provider of renewable energy in the country, and whereas wind power is strong and growing in New Mexico, providing almost one-fifth of New Mexico's electricity production, and attracting $3.4 billion in capital investment to date. Whereas the development of wind power provides economic opportunity in our state, supporting more than 2,000 jobs, and generating more than $12 million in lease payments to landowners each year. And whereas wind developments in New Mexico strengthen our communities by contributing $8 million in annual state and local tax payments to towns and counties across the state. And whereas continued advancements in wind energy will enhance our ability to attract new business and talent to our state, protect our environment, and power New Mexico into the future. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the City of Las Cruces, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim the week of August 2nd, excuse me, August 8, 2020, through August 15, 2020, as American Wind Week, and encourage its citizens to learn more about the benefits of wind energy in our community, and celebrate New Mexico's leadership in renewable energy production. And now, I'm gonna read the conflict of interest statement. This is where I ask if any member of city council, city manager, or any member of city staff has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda?
None.
Okay, so none. Now, we go to public participation, which I have a few emails. Excuse me. First one is from Mayor, former Mayor Protam, Emer, Protam Emeritus, Dolores Archuleta. She says, "At the June 15 city council meeting, one of my comments had to do with the Veterans Park, and when would we, when would that be open? And I gave you dates that we raised the Garrison Flag the rest of June and all of July. You read my comments, so what happens now?" Question mark. "Before COVID-19, those who provided comments during public participation, the comments were discussed, and a recommended solution was provided, and/or assigned staff member for review. If at all possible, if the Veterans Park can be opened on the Garrison Flag dates, that would work." The dates I gave you were June 21st, with the, which was Father's Day, July 4th, 4th of July, July 27, Korean or Veterans Armistice, Armistice Day, and the flag is raised at 8:00 and lowered at 5:00 PM. So this was an old comment, I know, but I think she still wants to know there's other future events, and wants to know the city's position on allowing the flag to be raised. I'm gonna go ahead and read two more, and then if staff wants to comment on the, any of these, they may do so. This next one is from April Natase. "To everyone, it concerns, I'm very concerned with the mask ordinance and fines. You need to think about what you're doing by finding business, or anyone for that matter. First off, do your research and look at the places that have very little to no lockdowns, and check out their death rates. Why do we hear all the positive tests, which many no longer believe because of the False Testing Act, but not the deaths, which is very small compared to those that are positive? We are gaining herd immunity, but we cannot even trust the death numbers as car accident victims get tested, and they're positive, it gets counted as dying from COVID. By threatening to find businesses and individuals, you are promoting fear, which is making them so scared that they are starting to deny others food and necessities. Some of these businesses don't even know what law mandate that they have to follow, or which ones prevail. Nobody can control others. Businesses are doing their best to sanitize and follow the rules that they are so, now so fearful, that they are causing more harm. I experienced this myself just last week with a slightly different issue, but still pertaining to the Governor's mandates. The other day, when we were still allowed to go into a restaurant, I was denied access with my service dog, because the manager said my service dog had to be, have paperwork to come in because of the Governor's rules." Well, guess what? There is no government or New Mexico entity which evaluates dogs to be a service dog or not. Yes, any individual company can claim that they can certify a dog, or you can go online and purchase a vest and ID card for your dog, Fido, for $80. But there is no universal entity that certifies service dogs. I will not do business with that business again, but they and everyone needs to be educated because they may be sued if they do this to another. Granted, a restaurant is not necessarily essential, but what if this was a grocery store? I have to quit buying at a local grocery store because they, the store people walking around like Nazis, making sure everyone has their mask on and on properly. I also have trouble breathing with a mask on. Legally, I can sue them, and I believe the fine is $70,000, but I have no desire to hurt the ones that are just ignorant of the federal ADA laws, which are not usurped by any Governor's mandates. I have contacted my lawyer, who will be sending the establishment a letter, educating, notifying them of the ADA laws, and that there is no paperwork for service dogs, no business. They even ask any other questions, but this is the, but this is the dog, a service dog, and what service does it perform? The only time a service dog may be removed, if they are a danger to other dogs or people, and cannot get their dog under control. This is just another part of businesses trying to follow the mandates, but not really knowing the laws. And this is another problem that is arising from the Governor's mandates. The Governor is putting the people of Los Cruces against each other by allowing snitches to report people who do not, do not wear masks, finding people. We are disregarding the individual who cannot wear a mask due to health issue. People are getting ugly, and this is not how it should be. The police are being put at a greater risk by now having to babysit non-mask wearers. COVID is ugly, but why are we even listening to the same people who said to go home and self-isolate, so that those people got so bad that when they finally went back to the hospital, they died? Why are we listening to those who put sick people into nursing homes? That is murder. Why are we listening to a governor who's allowing people from other states to come here to be tested, to be treated? Why are we allowing our governor to divide us? Why would we want to continue that? Everyone is just trying to survive. This is not how the southwest state of New Mexico should be, should be to its own. Thank you for your ear, and many blessings to everyone. April Natase. And then the last one, and I'm not gonna read, I'm gonna have to mark out a couple names, because he makes allegations that, you know, I have not verified, and I don't want to say it over the, over the air. This is from Vince Jeffers. These are my comments. I'd like to be read during the public participation part of today's council meeting. Resolution 21-021, "I'm grateful to the City of Las Cruces and MVCH for the programs that they run and help the citizens of Las Cruces. I'm also grateful that both parties have taken the proper steps to ensure that individuals selected for the Mono Imano Day Labor Program are U.S. citizens, citizens of Las Cruces, and that they have a right to work here legally." Next, the funding source for this program. Thanks to the City of Las Cruces Council for ensuring that the healthcare fund are being properly used in this program. I do not want to see a healthcare fund being used for something that they were not appropriated for. Resolution 21-022, "I don't believe this procurement is justified in being contracted as a sole source procurement." Question eight on the sole source rationale with contracting with any other source force an acceptable delay in meeting the city's requirements. Please stop with your, because of a crunch time, when you know these goods and services were needed. Resolution 21-023, "Please use VIN numbers or vehicle identification numbers instead of license plates for maintenance of city-owned or rented vehi, rented vehicles. I remember one of the few city employees held accountable for misdeeds in Las Cruces was because he spoke out for misdeeds, and ultimately was the one convicted of a crime and sent to jail. Yes, he worked in the one of the city-owned garages." Resolution 21-024, "I think it's best if the city uses funds on city-owned property. I still hold the same legal position that this property doesn't belong to the City of Las Cruces. This property is one of the many properties where the City of Las Cruces..." This is where I'm gonna stop. There is still no accountability, accountability, because Jeff Steinbauer has stated during city council meetings, Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, "All we did is what you asked us to do." FYI, I am tracking the City of Las Cruces Council on, yes, there's other things he says. Resolution 21-003, "I re, revert my same objectives made previously during the Las Cruces City Council meetings. As far as the Royal Crossing tid, I ask the City of Las Cruces City Council, please act in good faith. Having watched the previous meetings on this matter, it disturbs me, my understanding of a tid is, but if not for the tid, this project would not happen. During the CLC meeting, the tid has become, if not for the tid, which happened, which includes marketing and management fee, this development would never happen. Also, when the CLC acts in bad faith, as it often does, it seems to gravitate towards the same bad actors, and then he starts listing names, which I'm not gonna disclose, because... And, and, yeah, that's it. Okay. So, and public participation, I've got four closed meeting statements I need to read. Obviously, we've been busy. "Muscle City Council met in closed session at 9:01 AM on July 20, 2020. The following members were in attendance: Councillors Flores, Sorg, Bencomo, Vazquez, Abeta Stuvi, Gander, and myself, Kenji Yagashima. Staff President, David Meistis, interim city manager, Jennifer Hammett, outside attorney. She left at 9:55 AM. Jennifer Vega Brown, city attorney. Joslyn Garrison, deputy city attorney. Barbara DeLeon, interim assistant city manager. David Dahlan, assistant city manager. Dr. Jorge Garcia, director of utilities, left at 9:55 AM. Robert Cabale, senior city attorney. Damian Martinez, outside attorney. He came in at 9:56, and also came, coming in at 9:56. Deputy Chief, and now interim chief, Miguel Dominguez. Both came in at 9:56 AM. The meeting adjourned at 11:26 AM. And for the record, Muscle City Council met in closed session, and only discussed those items stated in the posted notice. Purpose of the meeting, number one, to discuss pending litigation regarding City of Las Cruces, ETA versus United States ETA, case number two, colon, 17, dash, CV, dash, 00809, parentheses, D dot NM, and the parentheses, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 10, dash, 15, dash, one, H, number seven. And then the next one was to discuss pending litigation regarding Jacob Sanchez versus Isaiah Baker, John Does, number one through five, and the City of Las Cruces, case number two, colon, 19, dash, CV, dash, 00196, 10th Circuit, number 20, dash, 2071, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 10, dash, 15, dash, one, H, number seven. The next one, Muscles, City Council met in closed session at 8:40 AM on July 21st, and the following members were in attendance. Councillors Flores, Sorg, Bencomo, Vazquez, Abeta Stuvi, Gander, and myself, Kenji Yagashima, outside, or others, were Catherine Tuck Parish. She left at 8:58 AM. She came back at 3:13 PM. Council went on their way and had lunch 12:20 PM to 1:30 PM. The meeting adjourned at 3:38 PM. Statement for the record, Las Cruces City Council met in closed session, discussed those limited items stated in the posted notice. Purpose of the meeting for this was to discuss limited personnel matters regarding the city manager candidates, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 10, dash, 15, dash, one, H, number two. And the three names that were discussed, or three people that were discussed, Gary Halpert, Jose Montregal, and Eifel Pili. "Muscle City Council met in closed session at 4:02 PM on July 22, 2020. The following members were in attendance: Councillors Flores, Sorg, Bencomo, Vazquez, Abeta Stuvi, Gander, and myself, Kenji Yagashima. Also present was Catherine Tuck Parish. The meeting adjourned at 6:27 PM. And for the record, Las Cruces City Council met in closed session, and only discussed those limited items stated posted notice. Purpose of this meeting was to discuss limited personnel matters regarding the city manager candidate, candidates, which is closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, section, dash, 10, dash, 15, dash, one, H, number two. The two names discussed were Gary Halpert and Eifel Pili." See here. "Muscle City Council met in closed session at 11:01 AM on July 27, 2020. The following members were in attendance. Councillors Flores, Sorg, Bencomo, Vazquez, Abeta Stuvi, Gander, and myself, Kenji Yagashima, Catherine Tuck Parish. Jennifer Vega Brown, city attorney, was present from 12:25 PM to 12:33 PM. The meeting adjourned at 12:33 PM. And for the record, the Muscle City Council met in closed session, and only discussed those limited items stated, stated in the posted notice, which was the, to discuss limited personnel matters related to the city manager candidate, Eifel Pili, which was closed pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 10, dash, 15, dash, one, H, number two." Okay, so now we're gonna go to acceptance of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 7.1, please.
That's it. I need a motion a second to accept the agenda with item 7.1 being removed for discussion.
So, move this, sorry.
Okay, motion made by Councillor Sorg, second by Councillor Abeta Stuvi, to accept the agenda as presented with item number 7.1 being removed for discussion. Christine?
This is on the motion to the, accept the agenda as presented with the removal of item 7.1 for discussion. Councillor Abeta Stuvi?
Yes.
Councillor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councillor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councillor Sork?
Yes.
Councillor Flores?
Yes.
Councillor Gander?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so item 7.1, resolution 21-021, need a motion a second, please?
Move to approve. This is Gabe Vazquez.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councillor Vazquez, second by Mayor Protam Gander, and I believe, Mayor Protam, did you have a question, or did you want a full presentation on this?
Like a full presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so with us today is Natalie Green and Jen Lauterbach, who will be making that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Natalie Green with Community Development for the record. The resolution before you is approval of an agreement for the Mono Imano Day Labor Program between the city and Mesia Valley Community Hope. Mono Imano is a partnership between, again, the city and Mesia Valley Community Hope. It is intended to assist those who are homeless, near homeless, and housing insecure, access day labor services. In exchange, they, for a day labor wage, they assist our Parks and Recreation Department with landscaping, beautification, garbage removal on city property. At this time, we have two vans. We take approximately 20 people out per day, five days a week, and they work five hours a day. And the city makes a direct contribution by providing the vans, the equipment, and the supplies. And then I will stand for any questions.
Okay, Mayor Protam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate the, um, the presentation. I just wanted some updates in terms of numbers. How many people serve, unduplicated, duplicated? How many have we actually assisted in becoming housing secure? What sorts of referrals? I have a number of questions. I don't know if you want me to go through each of them, if you answer each of them.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam Gander, I did document a couple accomplishments for you. So the Mono Imano serves about 200 to 400 a month. Obviously, we cut down due to COVID, but on, on our high side, we're about 400 a month. Since the inception of the program, we've had 8,000, 8,647 work opportunities, and about 1350 of those have been unique encounters, so they're unduplicated. And the people that we assist report that they use that for rent, phone, to pay bills, to save, or to be able to get a license, ID, or birth certificate. And not only is Park and Rec available for questions, Nicole Martinez is also on the Zoom call, can give more specific information, but I'll, I'll stand for your individual questions now.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I think most of them are, are very specific, Natalie, to the program. So I'd love to hear what Nicole has to say in terms of the update, and then if it doesn't get covered, I'm, I'm happy to ask the question, if that's okay, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Hi, everybody. Hello, Mr. Mayor. The council, my name is Nicole Martinez. I'm the Director of the Mesia Valley Community of Hope. And yes, Natalie has all the figures. We do send all of those updated amounts with each monthly billing cycle. In terms of counting how many people that have done Mono Imano, have received housing, that's a figure that I'll have to get to you at a later time. That can be really difficult, since people come in, do Mono Imano, and then they leave. They don't always come back, and so we're not always sure that, when they come back, then it would be looking at the historical data versus them coming back and what they're now putting down. Unless they've gone into one of our programs, then it's really easy for us to capture that, of course. But a lot of times, people self-resolve and get housing on their own. But I know for sure it's helped several people get into a couple of the programs that we run into homes that we own. So some of our chronically homeless permanent supportive housing programs that we have, it's been a really good transition in terms of paying their security deposits to get into those homes. And I talked to the couple of the supervisors today, and one said, because I'd asked him for some success stories and things that he wanted to share about the program, and he came running back in and just said, "I forgot to tell you that so many of them, when they get their own apartment, they use the money from Mono Imano to go buy all their housewares when they move into the place." So I know that they're definitely using it on housing issues and becoming self-sufficient through housing. And I, I can answer any other questions that you might have, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Nicole. I've always been really excited about it when I reached you, Nicole, and asked about, can we work together and get this program up and running it? And so have been very, very grateful to you, and really to the, the day labors that have worked. You see, are, continue to see the fruits of their labor, right? Literally. Literally, you know, just a beautifying of of our of our our city is just a win-win for all of us, especially to help them as well. So my additional questions are, how many referrals? Have you been able to identify that, you know, in terms of workforce solutions? And S S I, I'm like the types, I guess, I want to know for sure workforce solutions. How many have we been able to connect with workforce? And then what workforce has been able to do to maybe increase someone's. Right, job job security based on whatever services that they might have. Really interested in in that because I think this is sort of a stepping stone to a lot of these other types of programs that are out there. And I'd want us to get the credit, especially, well, not me, but you, because you're you're doing the work. And and so if you can answer that first, and then I'll go down the rest of my questions.
Sure, Mister Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara. The numbers for the referrals to workforce. Again, would be an actual figure that I would have to get to, but I know that it would be very low in terms of people actually following up. This program, Mano y Mono program, has been an awesome program. It's really, again, you know. Turns the myth of how homeless people don't want to work on its proverbial head, right? And we are turning people away that want to work all the time. They feel really comfortable coming here. It's not to say that they don't feel comfortable going to workforce solutions, but when they're already here on our property, it's really easy for them to just continue to utilize this program. It's still on a lottery system, so everybody that comes in doesn't get to just go and keep using this as their main source of income. But a lot of them feel most comfortable trying to do that. We offer referrals to workforce solution to every client that comes through the program. We post jobs inside the vans that they're driving in. We've had workforce solutions come to us pre-COVID, so they were coming and they would recruit people here, talk to them here. The two Mano y Mono supervisors went through workforce to get these positions. So we really have a strong partnership with workforce and making sure again that even our supervisors walk people through that procedure. But I do know, at least, you know, anecdotally, that not not a whole lot of people end up going through that program. And because those numbers were so low. We did reach out to some other partners, Bank of America, to get a grant to purchase computers here. So that our supervisors could then sign them up for workforce here. So that they wouldn't have to feel uncomfortable, you know, doing Mano y Mono, hundred degree weather, go over to workforce, COVID stuff, you know, everything's just so different. So so that was one thing that we did, so we bought bought a lot of laptops here. And so now the supervisors have those laptops to sign the people up directly here. So while I can explain to you the process and what we're doing, I can't tell you how many people have actually gotten long-term employment through this. But it has helped people. Day to day and month to month in terms of making their utility payments, their deposit payments, their late rent payments, even, you know, late fees, things like that, application fees. So it has definitely affected people in a positive way with housing issues.
Of it, thank you. How many have you had to turn away? Sorry, Nicole, no, I'm I'm trying, I'm I'm really, this is. Bear with me, I'm trying to get more money and more significant, like specifically, I'm thinking about. A worker specifically that could help be the liaison between, you know, so that your supervisors do the other pieces. And someone will help sort of guide these folks, you know, and and be the mentoring mentor probably that needs to happen between workforce and community of hope. So I I don't mean to put you on the spot. It's more about just trying to, for my colleagues, but for the public to understand, sort of, there's a lot of room for growth here, for sure.
So we are taking twenty people each day. When COVID first hit, we reduced those numbers, so we didn't weren't taking as many people out during that time. So obviously, we were turning a lot more people away, so the numbers got a little bit skewed during that. But in general, it's between twenty five and forty people that we're turning away on a daily basis from engaging in Mano y Mono. And Natalie is sharing some of those figures right now, so we do have a line where we are capturing how many people were turned away per month. From the program.
Okay, okay. So.
No, Mister Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, yes, so on the third line, you can see the daily.
I'm sorry, who's talking?
Sorry, Natalie Green for the record.
Natalie, okay, sorry.
So the third line has kind of the average daily people not picked for the lottery. And then the the large number kind of towards the bottom is how many monthly were turned away.
Very, very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, so you could, we could definitely have another work crew, if you will. Is there a need for that, you know, cleaning up and those kinds of things from the city's perspective? And would they have the employees and such to be able to manage another crew? Because it seems like we would have enough. And I'm getting to that, our conversation, Nicole, on Friday about businesses and others reaching out to law enforcement, right? About can we use the day labors to come clean up certain, you know, certain spaces that get pretty littered and and whatnot in our community? And I know how careful we have to be about about anti-donation and that kind of thing. But I I guess. I'll stop there and you can answer.
Mister Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, I'm going to defer to Parks and Recreation. I believe either Sonia or Franco can can speak to the need for an additional van or if we have the work. To support an additional van, so I'll defer to them.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, this is Sonia Delgado, Parks and Recreation Director. We can always use the assistance. We get countless requests for additional help here and there, not only from other departments, but of course from council and other members of the community. Do we have another van at the moment? No, we would need additional funding to help us with that, but we can certainly use the help. We'll never turn down help.
Good answer, Sonia. Yeah, no, I I knew that. I just wanted to make sure. What about personnel, Sonia? Do you have individuals that could oversee the process if we did get an additional van or funding?
Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, we would have to move some people around, but we can certainly figure out how to make that work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sonia. So. I was I was thinking over the weekend, Nicole, after our conversation Friday with Counselor Ben Como and myself and Chief Dominguez. That I'm wondering if there could be, now that you're getting requests, not only from the city staff and, you know, each council district, but other maybe businesses. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to set up a fund for others to donate into that. Fund to be able to have some, a group specific that addresses the needs, you know, when you do get those requests from businesses and and such. And I'm not sure if that has happened. Or how many times has that happened, but is that feasible? Simply to get away from, you know, feeling like you can't use this particular fund for those kinds of actions.
Mister Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, this is Nicole Martinez with Community of Hope. We haven't utilized any of our set aside donations to send people out to do litter removal. It hasn't been within our scope. Normally, that's law enforcement or codes that are responding to to that. So at this time, it's, you know, we've we've relied just on using Mano y Mono with the city parks areas. There have been times in the past. Twice, once where we partnered with Gospel Rescue Mission to do a big cleanup day down in in the areas here where trash was. And another time where we organized the the camp as sort of a good faith, good neighbor effort to go clean up around the Cleeches area. Even though it's obviously not the camp residents responsible for that, since they're at the camp and it's other people that are outside of the camp. That don't have somewhere to go, that have trash that they leave behind. At this point, we have not had a scope of of work here as we are, you know, funded to do that. And typically, our donations come in to house people or to make sure that we're focusing those efforts instead of, you know, responding to. Working with businesses and things like that, but again, we try as best we can and we're always available, you know, and I usually will go around to businesses as they pop up around here and let them know who I am. Because even if they they know that they're moving next to a shelter that serves people experiencing homelessness, they might not really understand what that's going to mean for their business. But they they oftentimes find out pretty quickly. So, you know, while we. It's difficult for us to go out and and police those situations. We do try to make those good neighbor efforts and try to assist our. I mean, I live here. I I care about how our community likes looks and, you know, how people are treated, both who have homes and who don't. So. It's it's an interesting proposition.
Thank you, Nicole. I have a handful of them. So Mayor, can we hear from somebody in terms of the limitations? That codes and law enforcement are posing, right, to to Nicole in terms of cleanup and and whatnot, specifically using the Mano y Mono program? I know that was something and they must get more. Requests or see the need and it's very specific to probably private. Could we, could we? Sort of now help me understand what the limitations of the of the use of this funding is for those kinds of situations?
Sure, I believe interim chief Dominguez is on the line. But I will tell you that Nicole and her team have been really helpful. We've gotten, there are some business owners on El Paso that have had problems. And, you know, we drop an email to Nicole and they're on it that day or the following day, they're on it within twenty four hours, and I appreciate that very much. So. Chief Dominguez, are you on, are you on the? Video?
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Dominguez, interim chief Dominguez. Mayor, Mayor Protem Gondara, we typically do not use the Mano y Mono to to help get solid waste when it's on. Alleyways and the like, when we do cleanups and such, or if it's on on private property of a vacant building. We'll also get a hold of the property owner and let them know we'll facilitate the gap grappler and and such to to assist. But we we did put it back on the on the of the property owner. There has been times where Nicole and Mano Mono folks have have come out and assisted us. And that one was a really issue, a really bad issue that we had just north of White, one on El Paso. So I thank you, Nicole, for assisting us with that, but typically, we don't reach out to Mano y Mono.
Thank you, Miguel. Mayor, I I think. Although I know that there was an issue there, I think there have been times that I think Nicole was feeling a little like. We'll do this, but we have to be super careful because of the funding and whatnot of going into those private places and picking up litter. So I guess I was trying to, and I think David might have some feedback to give us around that.
David Donlon?
I think so.
Mister Mayor. David Dawn, for the record. The Mayor Protem is correct. We, through Keep Las Cruces Beautiful and Code Enforcement, we have other community programs to help with community-wide cleanups that are not on city property. This money is funded from the city's Tellshore Fund to our healthcare fund. That's how we process the paperwork. And then we pay for the expenses there, but it is still city money. And therefore, we're subject to the anti-donation provisions of the New Mexico Constitution, which prohibits us from making a public benefit to a private individual. I e cleaning up somebody else's property. We do it on a very limited basis in this regard, in the examples that have been mentioned earlier. But for the most part, we're looking them for them to make public improvements on public property. We could have them clean up litter on the side of the streets, down the plaza, in our parks, that's where we use them. We could use them in other areas. More parks, and then we could redirect the parks crews to other rights-of-way and public properties. So that's how it works.
Okay, and just just to state that the cleanups that they're doing, a lot of it was. Homeless or transients that have left trash, other things that they've left that they shouldn't be leaving, just just really a mess, and they were cleaning that up. And so. I guess when you start to think about it, and it's and it's sometimes it's not, it's on property that's. Right outside the legal boundaries of the business. I don't know who owns that. And so the city's going to either sits there, city cleans it up, or the business owners have to hire someone to clean it up on stuff that may not even be their yard or maybe their property. So just thought I'd share that with you.
David Dawn, again, Mister Mayor, I agree with your comments. The only thing I would add is. Littering in this community is not limited to persons who are experiencing homelessness. We we experience that throughout the community, unfortunately. And if we could have someone not litter, that would help us all out.
This was a little bit more than littering. I don't want to say it over the.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, let's just put it this way. If there were porta potties around, it'd be better, okay?
Right.
All right. Mayor Protem, you have anything else?
Yeah, no, I'd I'd like to, I know this program is, it's been really successful. And again, we've seen the fruits of the labor in lots of different ways. And I I would like to encourage us to look at funding, increasing the funding. Especially not only for the day labors, but maybe a a coordinator, a additional coordinator, a job trainer that can help specifically. Address those needs that Nicole and her staff is seeing specifically to. Helping, you know, folks land a another job of sorts. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole, and my hats off to you and your staff and and to our day labors. Please tell them how grateful I am and. For for the work that they do.
Well, thank you.
Let's see, we've got Mayor, we've got Counselor Ben Como and Counselor Vasquez. Counselor Ben Como?
Thanks, Mayor. Honestly, I think Mayor Protem asked most of the questions I had as well. I had a, we had a great conversation with Nicole last week, and so I'm glad you're here, Nicole, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. Um, I second Mayor Protem's suggestion. I think we should seriously consider expanding this program, especially given the positive feedback we've heard on here today. Not just that, but obviously the need for, um, throughout our community to do these kinds of cleanups. So I'm curious what, I don't know who could answer that question, but I'm curious what that process would look like in order for Mano y Mono to be expanded.
Mister Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
David Dawn, for the record. Mayor and Counselor Ben Como, we would have to evaluate proposals from and have a discussion with Nicole. It depends really on what you're wanting to do. If you're wanting to expand the program for more crews, that's one conversation. If you want additional staff for Nicole, for like a trainer or a job placement specialist or something like that. It really depends on what you would like to propose. And then we can have a discussion with Nicole and her organization as to what that would cost. And then we would have to bring back an amendment to this agreement and a necessary budget adjustment via another resolution at a later date. We can't increase the dollar amount on this agreement because that's not how it was advertised. We can always go down, but we can't go up is what legal will tell us. So that's how, that's how that would work. But we're we're open to that discussion.
Definitely don't want to go down, but I would love to, I mean, I liked both of those suggestions that you just made, definitely an opportunity for more crews, but also staff. But I mean, I would like to hear from Nicole on what would feel the most supportive.
Mister Mayor, Counselor Ben Como, Nicole Martinez, for the record. I think that in our conversation last week, when we discussed having somebody who was sort of a liaison or outreach person. I think that that would be the most beneficial. I think that we should. In addition to expanding the amount of crews that go out, I think that it would be awesome. I think that it would be awesome if we could have a third crew. Again, we would, that conversation would take place with Parks and Rec and Sonia and her crew and see what, what the need is there, obviously besides a van, but in terms of the services that would be needed. And then I think that keeping the day labor program as the day labor program would be really important. It has been really important to the success of the program. And internally continuing to work with workforce, referring people and then signing people up for jobs and for workforce here, I think our supervisors have done a good job. And I think that third supervisor could also assist with that. But I'm, I think that having above and beyond that, instead of having somebody who's a job trainer, I think having that outreach like person for the whole community when there are issues that happen out in the community, because we're, you know, we're here, we're in this pocket. And it doesn't mean that our social workers don't go out, but they're working with, you know, 40 people in our backyard at the camp, 50 to 60 people that are using services all around here. And then, you know, the amount of people that we have in housing, so they're doing home visits. So we don't necessarily have a, a team that's just out there addressing issues in the community. If they're not our clients, you know, we can't force people to meet with us. So it's really just us kind of saying, all right, let's, I got a call from the mayor or from a counselor. Let's go investigate and see what we can do. And I will send staff out there, but this would be somebody who is designated to do just that. So wouldn't be pulling my staff from their current caseloads and their current grant orders. They're very tied to, and we're really, we honor, you know, our funding sources and what we were designed to be doing with those clients. And so I think having somebody that would respond to any city issues in that way would be tremendous. And it might be like, oh, we need help with getting the referrals to workforce. But it could also be like, yes, we have a mother and her daughter sitting outside of the closed-down bank. Can somebody go out there? We have this area under this tree. There's a big camp that's congregating there. We have a large group of panhandlers out at the Starbucks on, you know, whatever road porter, you know, out there, the 70, you know, that we had somebody that was addressing each of those issues that could be a real contact for the city, but housed within the community of Hope and then partnering with all of our partners here would be, like I said, tremendous asset to the city, I think.
Thank you, Nicole. David, is that something, I mean, that, I, to me, if, you know, this goes back to the conversation we were having last week with the bridge and all those folks right about letting the end users sort of get to provide suggestions for us on how to move forward. I feel like that's a perfect example of telling, here's an incredible service provider telling us this would be the most helpful. I would obviously love to expand the day labor program, but perhaps this is number, step one. And then step two is analyzing if that's needed in the future. But perhaps hiring a person to do some of the things that Nicole just laid out. I would love to see that proposal come through. And then, you know, I, I guess my other sort of suggestion is I hear you on the anti-donation and, and sort of the scope of work. But I loved what Nicole said in terms of being a good neighbor to, you know, Camp Hope, being a good neighbor to businesses around the area. I certainly get a lot of calls from folks around just concerns and issues they have. And I think one of the biggest things about, you know, living in a community that wants to support people who are experiencing homelessness is breaking through some of the dominant narratives that exist about folks who are experiencing homelessness. And I think we should be a good partner when we're doing that. And so, you know, I think if, if Mono E Mono can be a really good bridge between businesses and just other residents in the community who are experiencing some concerns with littering, trash, whatever it may be, if we can look at how, what would be a good way for Mono E Mono to be that program, to be that bridge, to, to be able to provide a service to, to more private entities? I mean, I don't know what that would look like. I understand the anti-donation clause, right? But I, I mean, I would like, love us to explore some of those options for sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Dollon again. Staff will have that discussion. We have to be concerned with procurement as always. I, I think the Mono E Mono expansion, that's an easy discussion. The other item on the community ombudsman, we may have to go through some procurement based on the, the cost. I'm assuming we have limited competition in that regards, but we still have to have that conversation and still have to do that. Clearly Nicole's agency being the primary lead agency for homeless services in Los Cruces would be in that position, but that doesn't mean that there aren't others out there that could help with that. So we have to be cautious on procurement. And that, depending on the dollar amount and the funding source, there might be a budget adjustment that would most likely have to come to council, if not also an agreement. If the dollar amount is within the city manager's authority, then once we have the budget, then we can award the contract.
Thanks for the clarification, David. And that's it for me, Mayor. I just want to thank Mayor Protem for pulling the item and having this discussion. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Councilor Vazquez and Councilor Sorg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilor Ben Como, Nicole for all of your thoughts and discussion on this. I think this is a perfect opportunity for local government to just continue to create a model that works for community that partners with a nonprofit. It helps to alleviate some of the social issues that, that not just our city is facing, but so many others are facing. I think this is a perfect model of how we can leverage, you know, our resources as a city to just do something very beneficial for part of our population that oftentimes, you know, just their, their needs are not met. Or as Councilor Ben Como said, there's, there's a lot of stigma and a lot of misunderstanding about people experiencing homelessness. And so I just want to chime in and say I support the expansion of this program with, with, you know, the experience that Nicole has had, working with this. To me seems like a perfect opportunity to take the cue from the folks that are on the ground and listen to them and do right by both our community and our nonprofits and our people experiencing homelessness. So absolutely support the expansion of this program. I'd love to see where we can take this. I don't want us to be limited to, you know, what the current scope of work is with the existing Mono E Mono program. I, I think we've built something really tremendous, Mayor Protem. Again, thank you so much for your leadership on this. I know this was your project. And so it seems like we've got something good going here. And I can see us replicating this model to alleviate some of our other societal issues that oftentimes we have a hard time funding. We have a hard time getting past the anti-donation clause. And just want to, just want to show my full support for this program for its expansion. And thank you, Nicole, for your leadership. It's not, not every citizen, not every nonprofit that wants to take on a project like this. I'm not sure that there are any others, to be honest. If there are, well, great. I, you know, appreciate their help and support as well. But, you know, thanks to all your leadership on this. This is just a wonderful model and I'm happy to support its expansion and continue that conversation. And want to make sure it doesn't fall off of our radar so that we can talk about this at some point soon. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Sorg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would just like to join in with my colleagues that I agree if we can expand this and make a program better, I'm, I'm for it. Some, some support for more efforts in this area is something I would support too. I just want to throw out an idea that may not work. But if we could join forces with the private sector so that these workers could work on private lands where the private sector contributes to this, this program, perhaps getting around the anti-donation clause that way. Just an idea, may or may not work. But I also wanted to add my praise for Ms. Martinez on the outstanding work she does at the Community of Hope. I'm always impressed when I, her, her, her work there and the way she, the way the work for the, the Community of Hope is operated. She's just a, does an awesome job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I agree with you and your sentiments. Okay, if there's nothing further, and look like, then Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-021. Councilor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Ben Como?
Yes.
Councilor Sorg?
Yes.
Sir Flotis?
Yes.
Councilor Gondada?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to 8.1, Resolution 21-024.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Councilor Sorg, seconded by Councilor Vazquez. Looks like William Blanchard will be presenting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. William Blanchard, Budget Analyst, City of Los Cruces. And the resolution before you is to increase the city's contribution to the Animal Service Center of Mesia Valley and to adjust the budget. First, here's some background. The Animal Service Center is governed by a joint powers agreement between the city and Doñana County. The joint powers agreement states that while the city and county each contribute, each intend to contribute 50% of the Animal Service Center's operating budget, the contribution amount will be whichever sum is approved in the city and county's respective budgets. In fiscal year 2020, this amount was 1.25, 1.25 million dollars each. To better meet their operational needs, the Animal Service Center requested increased contributions from the city and the county of $500,000 each for a total contribution from each entity of 1.75 million, million dollars. Due to the COVID-19 crisis, the county elected to adopt their fiscal year 2020 budget for fiscal year 2021, keeping their contribution at 1.25, at 1.25 million. The city then adopted their fiscal year 2020 budget with the same 1.25 million contribution. On June 25th, the Animal Service Center Board requested that the city contribute an additional $520,255 for fiscal year 2021 via a resolution. The additional funding will be used as follows. They are requesting two additional positions, a veterinarian and a grant writer, some minor equipment, which is a commercial washer and dryer, some additional, some addition, additional medical supplies and services, kennel supplies, general supplies, a small training budget, and they are also hoping to give a 3% merit increase. This slide is just showing where the money will be coming from. It will be a transfer out of the general fund into the Animal Service Center Operating Fund. And with that, here, here are your options. I will stand for questions and I have Clint Thacker, Executive Director of the Animal Service Center, here, here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, William. Mayor Protem Gondada has a question.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Blanchard. I appreciate it. I, I want to say that, you know, when we were discussing the budget, this was something that we had always intended to bring forward to council. And I will take responsibility, probably in the, one of the more senior people on the board for my favor, to remember and to remind and to suggest this as we were discussing. I think the items are so integral to what we are trying to do. The veterinarian, and I will let Clint say much more, but I, I want, you know, the veterinarian will help us in our quest to spay and neuter more of our animals as, especially when we move into the new center. This will be very important. The grant writer, there's, right currently, many of the leadership is writing grants and being very successful at it, but specifically, I think it's important to identify a grant writer. There's so many grant opportunities out there that someone can specifically focus their time and attention. It would just be so much more feasible for someone else rather than, because all of the workers and leadership or, excuse me, the leadership, but also workers have their own identified tasks. And, and this can sometimes get overwhelming. They have, the center has a very old washer and dryer. And as you know, they are, it's in constant use. And I know that in the past, being past chair, that sometimes they break down and the parts are, 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 are rather expensive. So having this would be essential, right? It's important that cleanliness and, and those things that Clint and his staff have continued to work on. It, it's really important to me. And so I, I just wanted to say that out loud. I think this, this money is, again, an integral part of what we continue to strive for there at the center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Ben Como?
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks, Mr. Blanchard. I guess my question relates to the county and the conversation with the county now. I mean, I read an interesting article yesterday about Doñana County began this new fiscal year stronger than the prior fiscal year. So I'm curious about that conversation with the county and their contribution moving forward to the Animal Service Center. And if someone can answer that. I'm not sure who it would be.
Mayor, by call.
Looks like, yes, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, they, I think they were really concerned about COVID and not sure. It was, as you know, right in the middle of negotiating the new fiscal year budget. And they had felt like they were not at a place that they could actually commit the funding. Hearing that, maybe it's time to go back and ask for the board, excuse me, for the commission to look at that. And definitely as a board member, I will bring that up at our next, at our next meeting, Councilor Ben Como. Cause I think it's important that, that that happens. And since we hear they're stronger than ever, or stronger than last fiscal year, that certainly being able to put in some funding would, would be, would be, or half of that funding, whatever, whatever that would be, would be so, so, so crucial for the, for the, the center.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that, that seems sort of critical, right? I think that this, the Animal Service Center provides such an important service to our community. And like I said during our work session, the only ones who will suffer if those needs are met are the animals. And so I think it's an important conversation. So just to, so I'm clear, Mr. Blanchard, on our end, this proposal is for the increased amount, right? For this fiscal year?
Mayor, Councilor Ben Como, yes, that is correct.
And then maybe I'd love to hear from Mr. Thacker. If the county, if the county's contribution stays as it did last fiscal year, what will, what will you not be able to accomplish?
Well, this is Clint Thacker for the record, Director of the Animal Service Center of Mesia Valley. Excellent question. We are looking at, again, downscaling a lot of our programs with treatments for the animals. What previously the center used to cover for all the rescues coming and getting our animals, they would have to start paying or the animals would leave without certain vaccines, without certain testing done. Testing's a big one they have. So those are all items that are, that we just will not be able to continue with in robust as we have before. To answer the previous question as well, is I got an email from our, our individual that monitors all of our finances and he read the same article that you did. And plans are already set to make contact with the county about that strong financial situation they're in. So, and they already expressed that too. When in a board meeting, I remember it said that it will be reexamined when they know their financial place and they'll relook at giving more money to us.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. That was sort of my biggest, my biggest question coming into the meeting. Obviously I'm now a customer of the Animal Service Center with my new pup. And so, you know, I just feel extra appreciative for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so before I get to Councilor Beta Stuvi, let me just. Okay, so before I get to Councilor Baitas Duvie, let me just share with you my thoughts on how the county was, is doing better than before. So let me just lay out the table here. The county receives their majority of their income from property tax versus the city receives a majority of our income from grocery receipts tax. Now, the county does benefit on those very small businesses that are outside city limits that are in the actual county. What comes to mind would be, say, Santa Teresa. Okay, so if you recall, when we passed our three eights of one percent for the grocery receipts, the whole harmless, the county was given that same opportunity. Keep in mind, they don't really generate income off grocery receipts, but in this case, they generated almost as much money as we did. So with the, you take the fact, and I'm not trying to take away from the management of that, they have, I think, a very good management team at the county, but I'm just saying, when you have grocery, when you have property taxes, it, for the most part, remains stable. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is one that, that property taxes continue, continue on, and they don't, they don't, they don't go down usually. And then you have the grocery receipts tax that kicks in, it's very possible that that could be one of the reasons why they're in a stronger position than they were in the, in the years past, because this was just relatively new that they got the, the whole harmless monies as well. That is my take on it. Okay, Councilor Baitas Duvie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for your questions and commentary. I am really happy to see these items before, especially when it comes to the veterinarian and the grant writer. As a new board member of the Animal Service Center, I see how important that these items are for the future and to help with our pet populations as well, and, and with just the basic care. So I'm just excited to be able to vote on this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Councilor Floris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, Mr. Blanchard, can you go back to the slide that shows the, where the money would go? I think it's slide three. Yeah. So the veterinarian is really important because what Clint has discussed is that, by the way, I'm the chair of that board. What he has discussed is that the existing building, I believe, will be used primarily for spay and neuter, and so, and that'll be hopefully as soon as October of 2021, because, because the new one is being built by Go, the Go Bond Funds, and it has to be used up by a certain time. And so I believe, Clinton, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you're looking, your vision is to have the veterinarian at the old center, and then there'd be a recovery room there, and there'd be room to do all of that. So in addition to not having a veterinarian to perform those services, or that service of spay and neuter, we really don't have the room in so far as recovery goes. As to the grant writer, yes, they are somehow managing to have volunteers do grant writing, and they just landed recently one for twenty-five thousand dollars, so there's been success in that regard, but not having someone who's consistently there creates problems, problematic. And the other, the others, Mr. Thacker went through all the other, and that's why we voted unanimously on this, for the additional five hundred and a half million dollars or so to, to fund or to give these funds for all these additional items. Training has to do with the training, not of the, the animals at the, at the shelter that, or the center, but more for the training of staff. And then Clint, Mr. Thacker made it very clear that the pay increase would be meritoriously based. So all of those, and of course, you know, if you have veterinarian, we're looking at having a spay and neuter of services, then of course, we're going to need additional medical supplies and services and additional kennel supplies. There has been, and I want to thank Clint for doing a fantastic job, and thank you too, Mr. Blanchard, for laying this out for us, for handling all the needs at the, at the center as they are today. Mr. Dahlahan, I know that we have discussed at meetings the, the possibility of breaking away from the joint powers agreement that we have, because it appears that the city does carry the brunt and the weight of the infrastructure, literally, and, and, and also financially, so it isn't just this five hundred, five hundred and so half million dollars that we're looking at. But there's also the issue, not issue, but just, it, it just, we've discussed that it would be a lot better for the city to be in total control and ownership of the center insofar as, insofar as everything is concerned. Mr. Dahlahan, can you elaborate on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Floris, David Dahlahan, for the record, the, the last of the discussions were in the county's hands, based on the wording of the agreement. It has to be a mutual agreement, or there's significant impacts to the city financially to do that. I know Mr. Maestis, interim city manager, sent county manager Mesias a letter, and we're hoping to have discussions sooner rather than later. It is not without heavy and serious discussions that we can move forward with this, with the county, so we, we have to start that process. The other thing that I would ask or advise you is that it, it wouldn't be something that we could realistically do unless we did it at the start of the fiscal year. So that's where we would have to work toward is next July one.
And how, so, yes, thank you, Mr. Dahlahan, and how would that work? I mean, does that mean that we'd have to have all our little duckies lined up in a row by June thirty, or how would that be implemented?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Floris, David Dahlon, again, I would argue that we would need to have our ducks in a row somewhere around December, January of this year, because the city, and appropriately, the county needs to plan budgetarily. The, the transition, as envisioned by city staff, would be that the county would continue to pay a flat fee for one or two fiscal years. That would give us opportunity to convert to a per animal fee basis to charge the county going forward after that transition period. We would still need revenue from the county to take their animals into a city-operated Animal Service Center. So, and it's, the numbers historically were sixty, forty split, well, almost fifty, fifty, I can't remember, but historically, the, the numbers have varied over the years, but never more than sixty percent city, forty percent county, or almost fifty, fifty. It depended on the year.
But Mr. Dahlahan, those, but that sixty, forty, or fifty, fifty breakup is for expenses and not necessarily for the fact that we, we really take care of the maintenance of the facility and the building and the property and everything like that. That's, it's besides that, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Floris, you are correct. The city owns the building, and it is on our books. We have other major capital that is on there that is on our books, and then we, we would also expend capital improvement money, whether it's coming from the state or city resources or private grants. We have an obligation to oversee the capital improvements to those buildings. So yes, and nothing is accounted for in our joint powers agreement for the fact that the city owns the building. There was a call for the creation of a, a lease that has never happened, and if we're not going to seriously entertain a transition to the Animal Service Center, then the ASCMV's agreement will need to have a lease added to it and a lease payment back to the city, or some other consideration given to the city of equivalent value.
Right. And, Mr. Dahlahan, are they now paying the city for the services that we, that we perform for animal, the ACO, the animal control officers that, that bring in county ritters, ritters?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Floris, what I think you mean to ask, are they paying an administrative fee per the joint powers agreement? Yes, they are. That's primarily focused on budget and finance. They pay separately for the audit. ASCMV gets charged directly for their portion of the audit. It does not include some human resources and other activities that the city has historically performed without being compensated for.
Right. And so we, yeah, so we're carrying a load there that, and if, and if the joint powers agreement is dissolved, then we would, they would continue to pay, I think you said that, they would continue to pay for services that we perform.
The county would, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the county. Thank you so much, Mr. Dahlahan. So I just wanted to just bring people to speed us to what's going on and with the, with the ASCMV, and, and why we voted unanimously on this, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To Councilor, Councilor Sorek?
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, um, the Animal Service Center has had a long history, going way back. I just want to start off by saying, I understand that pets are man's best friends, the old dog expression, man's best friend. I've had so many pets in my life, grew up with a dog, I even had a dog in the Peace Corps in Ghana. I, of course, had dogs in Montana, plus multiple cats, and I brought a couple, three of them down here to my, New Mexico when I moved here. I know how important they are, especially for people, for their mental health, for their comforting that they do. I know how important that is. But I wanted to just ask a quick question. We want a grant writer for just the Animal Service Center. Can somebody explain to me, or tell me, rather, just what's the potential in grants? How many dollars in grants are there out there in the world that a grant writer would be, be able to apply for?
Mr. Thacker can answer that question for you, go.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilor, Mayor, and Councilor Clint Thacker, Animal Service Center in Mesia Valley Director. The answer is easily millions and millions of dollars. There are PetSmart charities and also oh, the other Petco Foundation. Both are huge givers of foundations of, of money. On another board that I sipped on, I was sitting next to somebody when she awarded a one million dollar grant to us, to a facility, and just to hear the shouts of joy on the other end of the phone was, was awesome. Like I said, or was mentioned earlier, we've gotten twenty-five thousand, we got seventy-seven thousand dollars about a year and a half ago to get rid of the house, the mobile home house that was next to us, and build a brand new kennel area. There, there is a lot of money out there, because people are beginning to understand the value, like you said, of having a pet, and what that does to a community of having a facility and having the financial means to make great changes. So it was a great question, thank you.
So are you trying to tell me that we could possibly fund the whole animal shelter with pets? You'll use the dollar?
Well, we could, we could possibly fund a lot of the extra programs that we have placed, especially the spay-neuter center, absolutely. I think the, the big picture spay-neuter center that we'd like to start to get us up and running, yes, I think we could, would be able to get some grants for that, but we need somebody that can properly do a grant process and write a very convincing grant application, and that's why we need a professional grant writer to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar how grants are, are applied for. Greg, I'm disappointed in the county and not coming up with their share of this increase in spending or budgeting. But I, I look at, to look at this way, too, is our values, valuing human life as well as animal life, and just how much we're spending on both. It does concern me a little bit. So I, uh, I was also interested in the fact that our animal population in the shelter is down now this year because of the cor- coronavirus, because of the COVID nineteen, of course, and perhaps that maybe some, some expenses could be down, too. Just wondering. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor, thank you. I think that's it. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, David?
I would offer, David Dahlon, for the record, in response to Councilor Sorek's comments, next to police and fire and part of utilities, the Animal Service Center is a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five operation, as long as we have animals in the, the center. We have to cut back services, but at some point, you still have a minimum number of staff that you have to keep onboard to keep the shelter operating, whether you have one animal or you have a hundred animals, there, there's different thresholds, but you still have to operate this shelter every day of the week, because somebody has to clean up after the animals, and somebody has to feed the animals, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Floris, you have a question, or you forget to put your hand down? You're muted.
Forgot to put my hand down, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, David or Clint, I've got a question, and it's not about, it's kind of related to funding. So we're getting, I see more and more calls of feral cats that are hanging out in yards, and sometimes they get a little, they're a little rough, they're a little mean, and their residents are being told that they're, the best we can do is just trap them, or leave, give them a cage so, so that we can, so that they can get trapped, and then I guess take them to the shelter. But after COVID passes, hopefully, is, I'm being told still that we have no, we have no officers that are willing to, to get, say, a feral cat or, I don't know, a dog for that matter, but I think it's more of a cat, because they don't have the protective devices, I, I don't know if that's the case, but can you expand on that, please?
Clint Thacker, Director, Mayor, I don't, I, I'm not over animal control, so I'm very hesitant to, to comment on them, I'm more of a Gino Jimenez question, ACO supervisor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, David?
David Dahlon, for the record, I, I can't answer that specifically, but I am aware that we have, in light of COVID, cut back on our interactions with the public, but we still respond. I think we've cut back on the issuances of traps, because that just leads to us collecting more animals and so forth. But ACOs are still doing their public duty, animals running at large, they are trying to apprehend, trying to get them back to the rightful owner. We're working hard to reduce our human interactions, but I can get to more specifics and share with the whole council as to what has changed in light of COVID.
Oh, no, this isn't in light of COVID, now, this is, like I said, after or even before, but that we weren't, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if you have a, a couple of cats that are hanging out in a, in a tree or a bush or wherever they hang out, and they're, they're not the friendliest around, and it's almost like, hey, I've taken over your bush, and if you don't like it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attack you. And, you know, so are, are we expecting residents to actually trap them? Or, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, or, you know, I, I guess I envision, like when you see the K nine police officers and they have those guys in those big, those, the, the protective gear that they have where dogs can bite them and they could, you know, they don't feel it. I still think we need to have one or two of those and go over there and take those cats, get them out of the bush, you know, and then put them in a cage and take them away, or wherever you need to take them. I, I, we can't expect residents to do that, and that's what I'm trying to get at, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I will follow up with the animal control.
Okay, I appreciate it. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Clint Thacker, again, Animal Service Center Director. Being an ACO or animal control officer for some time, I was regularly trapping cats. And you do not have to even come in contact with the cat. They, if they're in the bush, you put food inside a trap, they go in and the trap springs as they step on a plate. And then the ACO can grab it, grab the cage and carry it to wherever they need to go. So protection wise, is all they need is a pair of gloves and they can make that. I do know, like, like David Allen said, ACOs are not providing traps currently for that, but that's COVID. If it's gonna start again, I'm not sure, but we, again, though, we are looking at implementing and making some changes to the ordinance for some of the other items for feral cats resources, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Okay, so if there's nothing further, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-024. Counselor Beta Stube?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
No.
Counselor Ben Comal?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
No.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we go to item 8.2, Resolution 21-025. Need a motion second, please.
Don't move, Gandera.
Second, a beta Stube.
Okay, move in a second. And Lisa LaRocque is going to be discussing this. And Counselor Sorg, you're the one who asked to have to have this put on the agenda. You want to say a couple of opening comments first? Counselor Sorg?
Yes, I was just trying to get up a document on my screen here. Oh, just simply that.
The 30 by 30.
The 30 by 30, yeah, that's right. That's what I'm doing. As you know what's going on in our world now with climate change and so forth. This is an effort to protect 30% of the planet for nature. The, there's an independent expert study that says that costs, I'm not prepared for this right now. Now, we have the presentation and all.
All right, all right. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay.
I understand.
Lisa LaRocque, you care to share with us some additional information?
Hello, Mayor, Council, nice to see you. Yes, I would. I this is my, I believe that that someone will put up the slide, the PowerPoint for me. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Oh, no. Okay, all right. Well, hold on a second. And I will do that. Apologies for the delay.
That's okay. If you know, if you'd like, I can just read the resolution.
I have a PowerPoint. Just, I'll get it for you.
So Counselor Sorg, where did you get this from?
I got this from the Western Leadership Conference and they're based in Durango, Colorado.
Oh, okay.
And they're calling this a Campaign for Nature. National Geographic is involved in it. The WYSs Campaign for Nature is part of it. They're all in this effort. And Senator Udall, as well as many other leaders in the Congress are proposing this in Congress.
Okay. Have you found out what he's gonna do after he leaves office?
No, he's keeping that a secret, I think. No, I don't know. Maybe he hasn't, but he hasn't told me.
Thought he may have slipped that into you.
Here we go. I guess she's ready.
I think so. I can see it's kind of small, but I think we can do it. I think we can make it work.
Mr. Mayor, I was, I was gonna offer to Lisa to pull it up on my screen here.
Be great. I apologize for the inconvenience. It'd be very helpful if you could do that for me.
Working on it. Give me two seconds.
I've been.
Sorry, Mayor, a little longer than two seconds. And Lisa, you'll just have to tell me when to advance the slides, okay?
I will. Thank you so much.
Lisa, if you would just, this is Barbara Delion, if you would just stop sharing your screen.
Sure. That's good, too.
It reminds me of my dad when he would say, the doctor's appointment, the doctor's saying, I'll be back in 30 seconds, and he started counting and and of course, the doctor kind of cracked up.
Aw, nice memory.
Yeah, I know.
You, I stopped sharing my screen. I'm very sorry for the inconvenience here.
It's all Gil Sorg's fault.
I'm almost there. Hold on just a second.
I actually have it too, if you want me to try again in front of me.
No, I'm good.
Thank you so much. I apologize again for the inconvenience.
It's all yours.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and Councilors, once again, nice to speak with you. I am here to tell you more about the 30 by 30 Campaign to Save Nature. Please advance. The 30 by 30 Campaign, as Counselor Sorg was explaining, is is brought forward by a growing coalition of more than 100 conservation organizations around the world, who are calling on policymakers to commit to a science-driven, ambitious campaign to save nature. And countries are committing to conserve at least 30% of the ocean and 30% of the land by 2030 as a minimum step necessary to adequately address the extinction and climate crisis. The 30 by 30 campaign is an interim goal towards protecting 50% of the planet's water and land by 2050. And Senators Tom Udall and Mike Bennett have introduced the resolution in Senate, resolutions for the Senate, and actually, it's 237. And Representative Debbie Halland has introduced Resolution HR 835 for a national 35, 30 by 30 commitment. Next slide, please. We're in a global extinction crisis. There's a loss of 3 billion birds in North America since 1950. That's 25%. There's next, there's a global animal populations have declined by 60% since 1950. Next, 1 million species now threatened with extinction worldwide. And the, and this biodiversity loss means that there is a loss of nature's services that threatens all life, including humans. As conservation biologist Tom Lovejoy said about 30 by 30, this is the level of ambition we need because this is the last chance to secure a functional living planet for people and other forms of life. Next slide. The planet provides vital services for free. The planet provides soil formation, pollination, climate regulation, food and fiber production, and recreation and spiritual solace, which is getting many of us through this challenging time. Because of the number of humans on the earth, we've tried to accelerate and replace these services without really understanding the complexities and feedback loops within and among these services. Scientists have shown that protecting and restoring nature, natural areas, is the most effective way to slow extinction and retain resilient ecosystems. Protecting intact nature is the most cost-effective way to add, to address climate crisis. And protecting natural areas supports local economies, provides services like fresh drinking water, and benefits to human life. Carbon moves through, that's fine, thanks. Carbon moves through a cycle. Human activities, including fossil fuels, burn on the planet, adding over five gigatons into the atmosphere every year. The red arrow indicates that. And despite land degradation and deforestation, the world's landscapes still remove more emissions from the atmosphere than they release. The graph shows that the world's lands absorbed and sequestered over 11 gigatons, which nets six gigatons of carbon per year that are not contributing to climate impacts. Well, that's nearly equal to the annual greenhouse gas emissions of the US. Next. It's a small fraction of the global carbon dioxide emissions of nearly 37 gigatons for the planet. And if we continue on our current land use degradation, then the world's lands will start to remove less and less carbon from the atmosphere. And we will expect increased wildfires, hurricanes, soil erosion, changes in rainfall patterns, and many other negative effects. With 30 by 30, we will let nature help us rebuild a healthy planet. Next slide. There's lots of public support for this effort. According to the Conservation of West, of the West Pole, 84% of voters in western states favor a national 30 by 30 goal. 86% of the New Mexico believes the state should use funds to protect and restore the health of rivers, lakes and streams, and conserve wildlife corridors. 84% of New Mexico believes the outdoor recreation economy is important for our future. And 62% of New Mexico say the ability to enjoy public lands was a significant reason that they moved out west. Next slide. So this resolution that I'm putting before you is to support, this is support of the 30 by 30 campaign. It's to establish support of this initiative and science-based, locally-led efforts to conserve and restore at least 30% of lands and water by 2030, and support efforts by Congress to champion this goal, such as a 30 by 30 resolution to save nature. And with that, I stand for questions. Oh, yes, that too.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Counselor Sorg, Counselor Vazquez?
Yeah, Lisa, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. You pretty well spelled it out. It's pretty straightforward. We're talking about this 30%, the habitat for all the plants and animals that inhabit our world. And so that is what we're trying to protect here. We're trying to keep that that much of the the earth, their home, their habitat. And New Mexico has a special place in this whole program or this effort because of the large percentage of protected land that we have. So it's only fitting that we support this effort in New Mexico as a whole, and especially in Las Cruces. As we know, we have some well-protected lands in the area around us here. And I can go on with the list, not not only mention the national monuments, or monument now of the Oregon Mountains Desert Peaks, but our National Park, White Sands, and also our wildlife refuges, such as San Andreas. And then all of the Bill, Barrowland Management and Forest Service lands we have nearby. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. See here, who's next? Counselor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Counselor Sorg, for putting this resolution up for a vote today. Just to add a little bit more context to the 30 by 30 effort in some of the in some of candidate Biden's administrative efforts as part of his plan to protect our environment and our climate and public lands, he does have the 30 by 30 effort listed as one of the prominent kind of parts of his policy campaign. And so I wanted to add that, just in context of what we're supporting today. There's definitely some big foundations, international foundations that have supported this effort as well. In addition to Senator Udall, actually kind of being part, you know, part of the architect of this campaign. So this is very, very much a New Mexico campaign that has international implications. I see 30 by 30 as something akin to the Paris Climate Accord in the future, something on that scale. And just as important, you know, for, it contributes, you know, to to protecting our climate and our environment, but it's really focused on land and water. It's that land and water piece of what it takes for us to get there. So this isn't, you know, kind of a flash in the pan type of initiative or effort. It's something that is well-funded, something that I believe is in candidate Joe Biden's administration as part of his efforts to protect our land and water, and something that in New Mexico, we have been leading on more so than than so many other western states for so long. So something important for us to show support for today. Thanks again, Counselor Sorg, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much, Gil, for bringing this forward to and thank you so much, Lisa, for working on the presentation and for your work in connection with sustainability and and all that climate change has thrown into, you know, it's been a wrench in our, in our environment. It's been thrown in. So I'm very grateful to to the work involved. And thank you, Counselor Vazquez, who has, you know, is on top of this as well. It makes me very happy to see it's 30 by 30, not 50 by 50. Because there are, I mean, our state, I know our governor, God bless her and everything like that. But I mean, there's this goal of, you know, everything by 2050. And I think it's already getting a little too late to set such a low goal. So 20 by 30 is, I think, very aggressive and very well, and very urgently needed. And I'm glad to, I know that in attending the Framework Conference on, the United Nations Framework Conference on Climate Change, there was a lot of emphasis on land and water, especially in Africa. And so, but it makes me happy that there's actually something focusing on water and and this. And so, water and land. So thank you again. And and I'm happy to hear that one of our candidates supports this and kind of worry about promises, though. But thank you again very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. Special thanks to Senator Udall and Congresswoman Deb Haaland. I appreciate their leadership and for Counselor Sorg. Thank you for bringing this forward. Some of my questions and comments are about how do we compute that specific 30 by 30 here in Las Cruces? And does, can you see places in Elevate Las Cruces, Lisa, that we are already doing this? And how would you bring those kinds of items forward?
Well, Mayor, Counselor Gandera, that's a good question that is still being resolved. I think the most important part is that there, we do have, as Counselor Vazquez says, there is a lot of natural land available. And our role is to be able to either restore and improve their ecological services. So having our arroyos throughout the city serve a function, having more trees in the city also serve that important ecological function. But outside of the city, looking at restoring our But outside of the city, looking at restoring our wetland areas along the river and, and really maximizing the, the ecological potential of each, service potential of each of the different habitats around us will be most important. But with the Oregon Mountain and Desert Peaks Monument, that's 20% of our area in Doñana County right there. And, and there are certainly other areas that will come into play.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. I, I think about Councilor Vazquez's commitment to improving Día Muera Dam and those things that I think are really important. And as you say, the ecological potential. And I, I love the idea of partnering, you know, with other entities, maybe Lisa specifically bringing forth a resolution or working with the Commission, Doñana County Commissioners, to bring this resolution forward, I think will be something, something of importance. I, I just don't want to lose the momentum and what that would mean, this 30 by 30 for the city of Las Cruces. And so anytime we can identify places, especially Lisa, with the work that you're doing, I think is, is really important. And, and my gratitude, thank you. Again, and Lisa.
Mayor Protem and Mayor, if I may provide some context to Mayor Protem's question.
This is Counselor Vazquez.
Counselor Vazquez, yes. So part of, I think, part of how we get here locally and in terms of thinking by acres protected is adding on acres to our existing Oregon Mountain Desert Peaks National Monument. Tomorrow, the President signs into law the full funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is almost doubling, doubling, almost tripling in size. And what that means is that the state will get more money for us to identify parcels of private land in Doñana County and perhaps even Luna County that we can, that the federal government essentially can buy and put either into a conservation easement or add on as a footprint to the existing monument. And so I think that 20% that Lisa was talking about, together with this new funding, helps us get to a higher percentage, which contributes to the overall 30 by 30 goal, in addition to what the city can do locally through the restoration of wetlands, through the permanent protection of open space that the city currently owns. So I think there's some, an important role for the county to play as well in that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Councilor Vazquez. That really is helpful. I appreciate it again, and my thanks to everybody involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Counselor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for that clarification, Counselor Vazquez. That was actually going to be one of my questions. If this, if this 30 by 30 included the expansion of acreage for current protected lands like our own monument, but I was thinking particularly about places like Berzer's National Monument in Utah, which I got to visit last year. And it's probably one of the most magical places I've ever been to and currently under attack, also through this administration and trying to reduce it. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. I always say, I'm really glad we have someone like you at the city. Of course, echo and ditto everything my colleagues have said. What I do want to mention, in addition to everything, is that I can't help but think about, you know, I'm glad that both Counselor Sorg and Counselor Vazquez have mentioned New Mexico's role in what this can look like moving forward and what it has in the past. But I think, I can't help but think about border communities as well and the role of border communities. And I, and I'm curious to hear from either Counselor Vazquez or Counselor Sorg, who are perhaps more into these conversations around this 30 by 30. But, um, you know, are there conversations being had about the border wall? And I think about the land the border wall sits on, and I think about the destruction of some of the most biologically diverse pieces of land in North America that the border wall has processed and gone through and is currently in destruction of. So, um, you know, I think not only New Mexico, but I think us as Las Cruces and Doñana County plays such an important role in, in this additional piece about what it means to protect land and protect its inhabitants and how the border wall plays such a big role in that.
Counselor Ben Como, Mayor. Happy to provide some thoughts on that.
This is Counselor Vazquez again.
Counselor Vazquez, yes. That's a, that's a great point, Counselor Ben Como. And I think, you know, currently there are several, what they call wilderness study areas along New Mexico's borderlands that have not been designated as permanent, permanently protected areas by Congress. I can think of, of a couple that abut the border here in New Mexico, including the Big Hatchet Wilderness Study Areas in the Boot Hill in Hidalgo County, and also several in Luna County that abut the border. And so part of what we could do under 30 by 30 would be to put those particular lands into permanent protection as wilderness, and that would essentially legislatively prevent new construction of any type. Unfortunately, some of that construction is already going on around those wilderness study areas. But, but yes, absolutely, there's more opportunities to protect the border. And through a 30 by 30 overall effort, those areas that have already been identified for their wild qualities, for habitat connectivity, for preservation of watersheds, absolutely need to be included in an effort like this to make sure that we are protecting some of our borderlands here in New Mexico. So those are some of the opportunities I see in New Mexico in terms of how 30 by 30 fits into this. But I think the state also has a role to play within the state land office, because they also hold a significant amount of acreage on, on the border and have, have the opportunity also to designate those lands as non-developable, non-developable, at least under the current, with the current administration. So some good opportunities to do that there for, for our borderlands.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to jump over Counselor Beta Stube. Do you guys mind if, let me let her have her comment? And then, because all of you have spoken, she hasn't yet.
Well, no, Mr. Mayor, this is a response to Counselor Ben Como's question about the border.
Sure, go ahead.
All along the border, from Lower Rio Grande all the way to the California coast, there are multiple habitats that the border occupies or goes along, I should say. And there is destruction of those habitats as the border wall is put up. As Counselor Vazquez had already put it in New Mexico, there's good examples there. But there's one prime example that's happening right now in Arizona. There, have you ever heard of the Pipe Organ National Park? There are pipe organs, which are very rare cactus that are being ripped out to put in a border wall right as we speak now. And, and it's very important that we try to protect that kind of habitat, very different than the other desert habitats along the border. That's all I wanted to add, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ben Como, did you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just wanted to say thanks to both Counselor Sorg and Counselor Vazquez. And Counselor Vazquez, I'm glad that you're, I'm certainly glad to know that you're part of some of those national conversations. So thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Beta Stube, sorry for not getting too quicker.
That's all right. I know, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you to Lisa and to Counselor Sorg and Counselor Vazquez for this. I think it's very important that we look at sustainability, and we want the next generations to be able to enjoy and have those openness. So thank you all for bringing that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you all, Counselor Flos and Sorg, did you have any more questions? Or did you forget to put your hand down?
No, I, I do have a comment.
Okay, Counselor Flos.
Thank you. So there's a couple of questions or comments I'd like to make. One is, I know that I've run this by some people in the community about having the Oregon Mountains Monument become a national park. And, and it would be far more protected in that, in that the monument can be stripped away. The status can be stripped by a president. But once a, an area is declared a national park, it becomes so in perpetuity. So I just want to put that out there for Lisa. And I know Gabe and, and, and Gil are on top of a lot of things. So if we could just get, I just want to bring it up apropos of all this protection, we'd have more protection. And, and I also would like to put out there again that I would like to see the city perhaps acquire some of the trust lands, estate trust lands, and maybe some of the, some of the BLM. So, and I don't know if that's possible, but I would like to see that, just because I think we'd take good care of that land as far as, you know, and with, by adopting this resolution, I think we'd have another directive to be very careful with how we develop our lands. And I think Elevate Las Cruces covered a lot of that in the process, being part of that and all that, and having Sharon Thomas and our land, our community planning people. The other question I have, I don't know if anybody has the answer, perhaps Lisa, Gil, or Gabe. What happened to the lawsuit that was brought on by SWEC? Remember that lawsuit to protect wildlife that was being impacted by the wall? David Bach was the Attorney of Record in Federal Court. What happened to that? Because that would be, that would, you know, touch on the border community, the impact and all that. Do any of you have an answer to that?
Counselor. Mayor, Counselor Flos, this is Counselor Vazquez. If, if, if the lawsuit I'm thinking of is the right one regarding the border wall, it was overturned by the Supreme Court today.
Today? Holy, holy. On your birthday, no less. What a birthday present.
Oh, I couldn't expect anything less from, from DC at this point. But yes, I believe that lawsuit was overturned, or that the halt to border wall construction out of the Fifth District Court in California was overturned by the Supreme Court today.
Yeah. And I think we filed a dynamic, the city of Las Cruces filed a dynamic brief on that. Maybe Jennifer would, I'll talk to her later. She's not on right now. But geez, what, what a horrible, horrible, horrible news. Thank you, thank you, Gabe. Well, um, so that's, yeah, that's it for now. Thank you so much, Gabe, again, and Gil and Lisa for all your wonderful work. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sorg, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just the last word on this. As you saw in the, a resolution that Counsel, Mayor, Senator Udall and Representative Deb Haaland, all are co-sponsors of it. I have asked Representative Torres Small about her support too. And, and she says, looking into it, as you know, she likes to get, to talk to other members of Congress about it. And she's in the process of doing that. I try to get whatever she can for consensus and support from all sides of the Congress. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, it looks like everyone's had their, their say. So thank you very much for that. And if there's nothing further, Christine.
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 21-025. Counselor Beta Stube?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flos?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now we move on to item 8.3, Council Bill Number 21-003, Ordinance Number 2936. The motion is second, please.
Somu, Gondra?
I can't, Ben Como.
Okay, well, it's moved in second. And it looks like either Karen Byram, Davis Sadio, and Sonia Delgado will be discussing. Karen?
Hello, this is Karen Byram with the Financial Services Department. I am attempting to share my screen. Apparently it closed on me.
Okay, it's Karen.
Can you hear me?
I can. It looks like someone's not on. We're having. Echo.
Okay. This is for the approval of the issuance of the GO Bonds Series 2020. Sorry, computer difficulties. We've been having some of those today. For some background, in 2018, the voters approved four general obligation questions for the four projects of parks improvements for a total of 16.9 million. The new animal shelter facility for 9.8 million. Replacement for the fire station number three for 6.2 and recreational trails work for 2.7 million. We looked at the cash flows, and we decided to go with two phases. The first phase was the Series 2019 GO Bonds. These closed on March 13th, 2019. They had a Moody's rating of AA2. And out of that $18 million, there was $6.5 million for the park improvement, 6.1 for the animal shelter, 4.2 for the fire station number three, and 1.2 for the recreational trails. In order to complete these projects, we need to issue the second phase of the GO Bonds, the Series 2020 GO Bonds. And this is the breakdown for the final 17.6 million of proceeds that was approved by the voters. And with this amount, we will be able to, Public Works will be able to finish their projects. This ordinance, as with most of our other ordinances, authorizes the city manager to approve the sale details within the given parameters. For example, the par value will, will not be above 17.6 million. The interest rate will not be above 10%. In fact, we are expecting it to be closer to 1.6%, give or take. And the maturity will not be later than August 1st of 2040. These bonds are payable from property taxes. And by approving these bonds, it will not raise the citizens' property taxes, because with the structure already built in, the level will remain the same. We expect these bonds to be sold at a competitive sale at this point, because the market has evened out. And I have, like you said, David Sadio and Tony Trevino are on for any questions regarding those projects.
Okay, okay. It looks like Counselor Ben Como has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, Karen, can you, thank you for the presentation. Can you go back to the projects, um, slide, please? Thank you. I'm wondering if we could get just a brief update on some of these. I particularly, you know, interested in hearing where the plans for Fire Station 3 are. But I mean, at least for me, that's, that's the update I'd like to hear on, for sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Ben Como, David Sadio, Interim Public Works Director. And thank you for the question. I will let the group know, we will be coming to council with a work session update in September. I believe it's the 14th that will be coming and giving a full update on all the projects.
Oh, great.
Question directly. The fire station number three is going through the advertisement process right now. We will be reviewing the RFPs, I believe, the second week of August. Once we're able to review those, then we'll move forward with selecting a candidate and moving forward.
Thank you, David. I appreciate that. Looking forward to, when you said September, I was like, oh, that seems so far away, but that's not true. It's next month.
It's right around the corner, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Counsel, Karen, did you have a comment? Or you just have your? Or you just have your hand up? Okay, Counselor Flotis?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Karen, so much, and Ms. Byram, for your presentation. The only question I have is, the, we approved, what we're doing today is approving this amount to do exactly what? We took the four questions in 2018. All questions were approved. And the bonds are payable. And so. So what are we doing? I really don't understand what we're doing. I don't understand the language. It says that the bonds will be payable from federal taxes, i.e. property taxes. With this issuance, there will be no remaining authority to issue bonds as approved by voters in 2018. So, and then you're saying that the 17,600 is what we're, we have to vote on today? Or can you explain that, please, Ms. Byram? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, this is Karen Byram again. What we are doing is voting to approve the issuance of Phase 2 of the bonds that were approved in 2018. We only issued 18 million of the 35.6 that were approved by the voters. This is to issue the final amount in order to complete the project. So this ordinance, if approved, would grant approval to sell and issue the bonds.
Oh, got it. Sell and issue. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Byram. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? It looked like, okay, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Ordinance 2936. Counselor Beta Stupi?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Sorak?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Gondra?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so next are board appointments, which we have none. So next is item number 10, notice the proposed ordinances. Now, let me ask if any of you have any comment on any of these proposed ordinances, which are, there's about 12, 11 of them. We could probably suspend the rules to discuss them. And that way there, we don't have to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, David?
David Dawn, for the record. Items 10.1 and 10.2 are related to the amending the municipal code on the South Mesquite Design Review Board and assigning those duties to the new Historic Preservation Commission. And then items 10.3 through 10.12 are related to the Tax Increment Development District, first read of the ordinances to dedicate either a portion of the grocery receipts tax or to the property tax to the Royal Crossing TID. As part of my discussion this afternoon during City Manager's comments, I'll give you an overview of the next steps related to where we are. But if you need a presentation on items 10.3 through 10.12, we would need a motion to suspend the rules and make a staff presentation.
Thanks, David. I was just checking to see if you were paying attention, if you were caught, you know. And you did, so that's good. So let's go to 10.1, Council Bill Number 21004.
So moved.
Well, no, we're gonna bring it forward.
Sorry, bring it forward.
Bring it forward. Next one is number 10.2, Council Bill Number 21-005, Ordinance Number 2938.
Bring it forward.
Forward. Okay, so now we're at 10.3. As David mentioned, between 10.3 and 10.12, if any of you have any questions or comments on any of these, then we can suspend the rules and discuss those. If not, then I'll just go down each one individually, if you want to bring them forward. Okay, 10.3, Council Bill Number 21-006.
Bring it forward.
Forward. 10.4, Council Bill Number 21-007, Ordinance Number 2940.
Bring it forward.
Forward, number 2.5, Council Bill 21008, Ordinance Number 2941.
Bring it forward.
Forward, number 10.6, Council Bill Number 21-009, Ordinance Number 2942.
Bring it forward.
10.7, Council Bill Number 21010, Ordinance Number 2943.
Bring it forward.
Forward, 10.8, Council Bill Number 21-011, Ordinance Number 2944.
Bring it forward.
Forward, number 10.9, Council Bill Number 21-012, Ordinance Number 2945.
Bring it forward.
Forward, 10.10, Council Bill Number 21-013, Ordinance Number 2946.
Bring it forward.
Forward, 10.11, Council Bill 21-014, Ordinance Number 2947.
Bring it forward.
And 10.2, Council Bill 21-015, Ordinance Number 2948.
Bring it forward.
Forward. Okay, so Dave, let me just do this because I was going to discuss a little bit about a suggestion on regarding the TID. But why don't you go ahead and do your portion of that? So, or I can go ahead and say mine, and then you can just kind of tell me what you were thinking of in your comments. Is that okay?
Sure, Mayor.
Okay. Well, first off, I want to thank you and city staff for working over the weekend to get the luminarias and the orange ribbons around various trees there at City Hall. I think it's, I know KVIA TV did something earlier on that, and that really was nice to do as a tribute to those who lost their lives exactly one year ago today. So thank you for working on the weekend to get that done and all the staff involved in that. I guess that was maintenance and Parks and Rec. I don't know, I don't know what other staff worked on that. But I don't know if you want to say who that was.
Mr. Mayor, that was city facilities staff in the Public Works Department and Parks and Rec.
Thanks for that. And then what I was, what I was wanting to discuss is apparently some members of Donaña County Management Team have discussed with the Mr. Zach Uyger. And it looked like they had come to some type of agreement, a possible, that they'd be willing to do. And so I was hoping that city and county could probably get with the county to see if that's something there that, that both of us could agree on and move forward. And so I don't know if you want to talk about what you were going to say, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, David Dawn, for the record. I just wanted to hit on a few items related to the TID. All of the city council was sent an email today that forwarded from Dr. Griselda Martinez, our public economic development director, related to the ongoing public input process related to the formation of the TID district known as Royal Crossing. So that should all be in your inbox. If you have any questions due to open meetings acts, please send any questions back to myself, Barbara DeLeon, or Dr. Martinez. But please do not copy the council completely. So we are in the public input process now. There is both a website and an email address in which people can provide public comment within that notice. Public comment will be taken through August 11th in advance of the public hearing on August 17th, when you actually consider the formal resolution of the formation and the ordinances that you just discussed today. The, at the public hearing, the actual public hearing for public comment, in addition to emails, will be held at 9:00 a.m. on August 11th at, on via Zoom. If you need to register, we're asking everyone to register the day before if they want to participate in the Zoom meeting. And they can respond to econdev@las-cruces.org if they want to participate in that, but they're not obligated to do so. They can submit questions or comments or concerns via the email. And that's also contained within the public notice. And we are working on the website to create a scrolling list of questions and answers related to the questions and comments submitted by the public. And that will be updated on the email on the website as proposed. For that, Mayor, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for that, David. But let me just clarify a couple of things. I, the last one we had, our, our work session on it, it lasted quite a bit. I think we were able to get what a lot of the residents wanted to discuss. I want to use this work session for primarily city council to understand the mechanisms and not, you know, I don't mind comments from the public, but I think this is one that's going to be needed to make sure council's fully aware of all the ramifications about the TID. And I think the majority of it is going to be geared toward that.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're, I understood your question. You're asking for a special work session separate from the public input hearing. So we need to work on that. Do you want to do it after the public hearing on Tuesday? Or, because we have our regular work session on Tuesday.
Okay, so we're going to have, probably so.
Okay.
That'll be fine, because we're also going to be discussing, I think it's that, that day as well, the I-Net Med contract or something.
We have, Mr. Mayor, this was, you're stealing my thunder here. This was on my council comment, city manager comments. On August 11th, you have a special work session already scheduled at 9:00 a.m. that will run simultaneously via Zoom to discuss the intervention support and also the tabled community development, round two building permit fees. That's scheduled on Tuesday, August the 11th at 9:00 a.m. So we will work on scheduling us another special work session after that, just to discuss the Royal Crossing TID.
Okay, and just for clarification, the reason why we're not having our meeting on the 10th Monday is that's the day that EFO is supposed to be in town to negotiate, finalize the contract and, and come on board, well, come on board and meet, the council can meet that, meet with him.
Yes, sir, that's how I understand it. And we have, and you have your agenda setting that afternoon. I think it's at 4:30.
Right, okay. Okay, so those are the only comments I have. And now I'll turn to Mayor Pro Tem Gondra.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Thank you, Mayor and staff, for working on that beautiful tribute to our sister city, El Paso, Pecas, for the families who lost their loved ones due to the massacre. I thought that was a very nice gesture. So, thank you again. Mayor, I'm wondering if there is a way that we might, did I get this correct? Or, or I'm not sure, but planting maybe 23 trees in memoriam for the lives lost would be really nice and have the orange ribbons all the time would be a very nice, I think, tribute to the families and the, the lives lost. So, congratulations to Counselor Ben Como for being selected to the race in equity. Did I get that group? No, I messed it up, but it, it's with, I'm so excited and so proud that you've been selected to that group. I think that's going to, you're going to bring a very nice, very nice addition, and especially looking forward to the information that you find out and, and bring back to council, that something that Counselor Ben Como and I have been talking about, race and equity and just equity in our spaces at City Hall. But especially for, for our city, I think, for all of us, I know on council how important equity is in all its forms. And I think you'll, you'll be seeing some more proposed, maybe resolutions. Mayor, I don't have any idea, but maybe we can have some sort of committee specifically as it relates to that for the city. I think that would be really important. Let's see, I'm going through my notes. I heard a really interesting segment on NPR over the weekend. A young lady who's actually a youth has worked really hard to break the stigma of, of, of mental health and having mental illness, if you will. And she has actually passed a, she has been successful in passing a, a resolution through, in her schools, in the schools, to allocate mental health base for students. And I got to thinking about, would it be cool to do something like that for our city staff and just for our city? And so I'd like to, Mayor, work on a resolution to establish mental health base for the city of Las Cruces. I think that would be really important. What was really intriguing by, by this is not only does it help break down the stigma, but it helps very compassionately linking folks to the necessary resources earlier on in preventing larger things from larger incidences, suicide, those kinds of things related to our youth. And, and I thought that was something that was really interesting to me. I think so many times we are so late in recognizing those signs and symptoms, and it's too late. So I'd like to work on a resolution, Mayor, for mental health base for the city of Las Cruces. I think that would, that would go a long way, and hopefully others would file suit, like our commission and our public schools.
Good idea.
Thanks, Mayor. The other thing is, we've been working on Recovery Night and our Suicide Prevention Task Force and, and a week-long activities virtually for Recovery Night and for Suicide Prevention Month, which happens in September. We're still ironing out the, all the details. But I wanted to say that publicly, that for sure Recovery Night will be September. Is that Friday, the 25th? It'll be happening virtually, but we'd like to have a segment specifically geared to youth and parents. And we have a nice group that's working on some youth activities virtually. And as, as we get closer to that, I will be letting you know more specifics, Mayor. And with that, I'm, I'm, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
And that is Friday, the 25th.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Flotis? Okay, your time has elapsed, Counselor. Counselor Flotis, you're, you're on mute.
Yeah, okay, I'm okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank you for, and the city, particularly the city facilities in Public Works and the Parks and Rec for putting the luminarias and the ribbons up in memory of the massacre a year ago today in El Paso, at the Walmart, where 23 lives were lost and got moved out, were shattered. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to, with the passing of Coach Henson, there were two wonderful articles. I believe they were in yesterday's newspaper, Peter Goodman's article. And there was a reporter, a sports reporter by the name of Felix, Felix. Yes, yes, Chavez. And they both spoke of Coach Henson's humanity. And, and apparently. And, and apparently in 1962, when he first got to MSU or got to Las Cruces, because he coached at a high school before that, I believe. Anyway, right, right, your high school, your alma mater. Yeah, and he was actually, when he was recruited to MSU, he emphasized, and this was, it was, you know, it's 1962 was, you know, the Freedom Riders and, you know, the Civil Rights Act was really, really fermenting in the South. But he just cut, not casually, but insisted that if he was going to be hired, that, that the, he would make sure that the, the team was integrated. And then Peter Goodman's article, and, and then, and then Felix also mentioned wonderful things. So I just want to mention Coach Hanson. Apparently he did touch a lot of lives. And then, of course, Peter Goodman talked about his, his, you know, when he was a rabble rouser, as if he is still today in 1969, who was actually, Hanson really supported him. And I also-
Who was the rabble rouser?
Peter.
Not Hanson, oh, okay.
No, not Hanson, no, Peter. Well, he still is, that's what I said, as if he isn't now. And I'd like to thank Senators Udall and Heinrich. And I read something, so I don't know, anyway, Representatives Ben Ray Lujan, Deb Holland, Soty Torres Small for their vote on the Great American Outdoors Act in securing full and permanent funding for land and water. But that was something that was mentioned earlier and, and Gil said that Soty hadn't, but anyway, this article indicated that she had. So I just want to clear that for the record as well. And what it will do is ensure that we conserve the places where we hunt, fish, hike, and camp. And, and the ad was published by New Mexico Wildlife Federation, established in 1914. So that's, that's pretty much it. I also want to say that I will be in Europe beginning on August 11th. So tragically, I will not be, and I do mean that without sarcasm, I will not be able to participate in the TID discussions on August 11th or any subsequent prior to, and, depending on connectivity and whether my computer, it's been having problems since day one. And I insisted I get a new one, but all they did was fix it. But, but I hope to attend meetings, but of course, at 1:00 here, it's already 9:00 in the country I'm going to be in, town, city I'm going to be in. So I hope to participate and I won't be back until September 4th. I just want people to know that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Just drink a lot of coffee, stay up.
Yeah, when they, the meeting's going to be starting at 9:00 PM our Belgrade time. So I'll be 9:00 and then our meetings go till 9:00 sometimes.
Before I get to, to Counselor Storg, interesting fact about Coach Hanson is everyone knows that Bobby Knight was coach of Indiana, right? But Lou Hanson was actually the most winningest coach in the entire state of Indiana. So he actually had a winning, better win record there in Indiana than Coach Bobby Knight. And Coach Hanson, it was world, worldwide news. I mean, from New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Sports Illustrated, everyone covered his, his passing. So thank you for recognizing. Well, it looks like Larry Nichols has a question. Larry, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know this is, I'm reserved for the counselors and yourself, but I want to thank Counselor Flores and you, Mayor, for mentioning Coach Hanson. I'm going to date myself. I actually played on Coach Hanson's team in high school.
You did?
He won three state championships in a row for Las Cruces High School. And I was fortunate enough to make varsity as a sophomore.
Oh, wow.
One of those championship teams. And everything you said, counselor, was exactly right. He taught principles to young men that carried them through their life. But the one that he taught, that I remember very carefully, very pointedly, is that no matter what the score is in the game, you never give up. And he taught this and that. He was, he was a wonderful individual. He was a coach, a counselor and a mentor. And I was very fortunate in being able to benefit from his guidance. Thank you for letting me say that, Mayor.
Now, so do you have your letterman's jacket?
You know what, sir, I do. Oh. Don't ask me if it still fits, don't I?
No, I, I just want to see if, if they spelled bulldog, B-U-L-D-O-G back then, or, I think it started with us in the D-A-W-G in the 80s. But I don't know, because we get a lot of flack from other Bulldogs back in the 60s and 70s that we spell it wrong, so, you know, I don't know.
Oh, the, the, the sports teams, Las Cruces High School back in that era, we had basketball teams, state championship track team, state championship baseball teams.
Yeah, no, I was talking about, I was talking about the way they spelled dog, D-A-W-G or D-O-G?
DA, yeah, D-A-W-G.
You guys spelled it like that back then?
I don't think we did back then. I think it's the other way, yeah.
Okay, gotcha, all right, well.
Thank you for that interruption. I hope it wasn't too much of a-
No, 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 I'd like to, I'd like to see a picture of it. It'd be interesting to see what it looked like back then, so, yeah. Yeah, then my time in the, in the late, mid 70s, early 80s, we won nothing.
Well, I was saddened to hear of his passing.
Yeah, no. Oh, one other interesting fact, you say about how he never gave up. I read where he fell over 150 times and only one time kind of seriously hurt. I mean, the guy just wouldn't give up 150 times, you know, because of that, towards the end, that debilitating illness he had on. So, okay, well, thanks for sharing that, Larry. I didn't know you played on the Cruces High. That's pretty cool. That's, that's really nice. And you, yeah, you did date yourself, so I'm already adding up, you know, how old yours. I'm just kidding, Counselor Storg.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Larry, for taking us down memory lane. Yeah, it's quite amazing that we have such an important person that is, came from Las Cruces in, in New Mexico State. I also want to add my comment on the El Paso Walmart massacre to this first anniversary today, in that I just want to point out how important it is to continue to work against racism and gun violence in this country. It's obvious. Um, I'd like to ask a question. I, I think I've got it wrong. If a member of the public wants to have a statement or a comment read in the city council meeting, where do they send it again now, Mr. Mayor?
They can send it to me. I would prefer that they send it at least the day before a council meeting, you know, because sometimes I get them, I, sometimes I get them like at 12:30, you know, I'm, I'm, especially today, I had a lot of, a lot of stuff going on and, and I got one in late at the, the last minute and I was able to read that. But I would prefer that they send it, if they can, or before 9:00 morning of our meeting.
Okay, um, did you get one from Mr. Tommy Black?
Can't say that.
That one in, but he, I'm not sure who he sent it to. I thought he sent it to you.
Well, I can, I can always read it our next council meeting if you have found it.
Okay, I'll have him resend it if that's the case. Um, also, in a correction I have to make, Representative Soty Torres Small supported and voted for both the land and water conservation line as well as the Great Outdoors Act. She was strong supporter of both of them. So I'm, I'm sorry we got that misunderstood. What she is now working on is this 30-30 act here that we just passed a resolution on. Last Friday, I submitted to the staff a, a group of questions about the Royal Crossings TID. And I just wanted to ask that they be shared with our, the consultant that's been hired to study this TID, David, or Daniel, rather, Hernandez. I hope they can be shared with him, those same questions. And also, the answers to the question, I hope they get posted to the website so we can all see them by the time next Tuesday comes along on, on the 11th. And only one other thing, and that is that I would like to hear more about the appointment that Counselor Ben Como got appointed to dealing with race and equity. So when I pass it on to her, I hope she can explain that. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and Counselor Storg, I did find an email that Mr. Black had sent. I don't know if it was to me, it just says, "Found an office 365 email." Says, "Hello, I hope this email finds everyone and your loved ones well. First, I'd like to thank everyone for what you do for this great city of Las Cruces and taking time to read my email. I would like to speak at the next city council meeting and fill out a public participation form. Will you please let me know if the public is allowed to speak at a work session and how one can get on the agenda of the upcoming meeting? Appreciate your time." Just have him email me, Counselor, and let me find out what it is he wants to discuss.
Okay.
Kind of go from there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ben Como?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everyone. First and foremost, I want to wish happy birthday to Counselor Gabe Vasquez, who just keeps getting, turning older and I can't catch up to him, so that's a shame.
Well, let's, why don't you, why don't you lead us in a happy birthday song?
No. Does any, okay. Can everyone, I won't do it until everyone on mute, though. There you go.
Las mañanitas, las mañanitas.
No, I don't mean las todas. Okay, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. And me more.
For you, one, for you, two. Las mañanitas que cantan alrededor de mí. Alas, oops, a los muchachos bonitos. I'm sorry, no, it's too long.
Okay, well, I was following your lead. I was kind of mumbling it, you know?
Oh, oh, do you want to sing?
No. Worked good, worked good, worked good. Gabe, Gabe gets the point, I'm sure.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Happy birthday, Gabe. Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and Counselor Storg for bringing that up. I was invited to participate in the Governor's Advisory Council for Racial Justice, along with, I think, 50 other leaders from across the state of a very diverse group of people from all over the state, actually. There's a couple of us from Las Cruces, there's folks from Deming, Hobbs, all over the state. So the southern part of the state is, of course, hopefully well represented. So I'm very excited to undergo those conversations and see what can come out of it. You know, I, I'm a little skeptical, just given what some of those spaces often turn to be, but perhaps they don't know what they got themselves into when they invited me to participate. So I'm, I'll be excited to report back what those conversations are like. So thank you for, both for bringing that up. I too wanted to make comments about the anniversary of the massacre that took 23, 23 beautiful souls, both El Pasoans and Quarences, from us last year. So, so much love goes to El Paso and those families who, who will never forget that day, just like the rest of us. And I think it's actually very important to continue to remember and to continue to up the intent behind that day, which was white supremacy and hatred, specifically against Latinos and immigrants in this country. And that, that sentiment is actually behind all kinds of policies that impact Latino immigrants, people of color in this country. And we absolutely must continue to speak up against it and push forward policies that protect the lives of, of those mostly impacted. I'm really glad to hear the city is doing that beautiful project. So thank you, Mayor, and all the city staff who participated in that in solidarity with our sister city in El Paso. And, you know, I can't help but think of the parallel between those 23 souls then and the 23 souls that have lost their lives to COVID in Doñana County. So today is very much a day of grief. As many of you know, me, I'm a chiona, I cry literally about everything, and even Larry's story made me tear up. So that's, that's just because today I feel like is a day full of grief. I, I actually know the family of, of one of the men who lost their battle with COVID. I know that family well, and the Hernandez family, so my heart goes out to them. And it just reminds me of the things that we will lose to COVID that we will never get back. So for those who still don't want to wear a mask, I have little patience for that. So I just wanted to bring that up because I think there are just things we will never get back after COVID. We'll get back GRT, we'll bounce back, the economy for sure, we'll make sure of it. But that family, those kids will never see their dad again. So I think it's important for us to remember that as we move forward with decision making regarding the pandemic. I think the last thing I wanted to add was, speaking of the pandemic and ways that we can continue to support those who are struggling, like small businesses. I've heard from a couple of folks who had perhaps recently started a small business, thus not qualifying for a lot of the PPP loans or perhaps even any of the state relief, any of those state loans that'll, they're going to be coming out for small businesses. And I'm curious to, I'd be interested to have a conversation with Dr. Martinez and of course, Mr. Mayastas about what are the possibilities of us supporting those small businesses, those folks who took a risk last year as it was, started their business, and then the pandemic hit, and that they're sort of stuck in this place where there's no support for them. And so perhaps we can take a look at some of those permits in 2019, reach out to some of those folks, think about, and think about how we can best support them, given everything, all the barriers that we have, like anti-donation. But as we think about another relief package, I'd love to specifically include those small businesses who do not qualify for any aid, federal or state, because of just when they happened to open up. So I don't necessarily, I mean, I would love to hear from, perhaps I see Dr. Payares on my screen, Dr. Martinez. It doesn't have to be today, but I would like, like us to have that conversation. And then that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Hey, Counselor, I know staff is looking at, okay, if you recall, city of Albuquerque was doing some different grants, and they did it because they received monies quickly because of their population. So cities that were over 500,000 received monies quickly and, and they were able to do something with the CARES money. So I think staff is looking at, when the time comes that we get it, how can we maybe do something similar? It looks like Dr. Martinez has, yes, Dr. Martinez?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is Griselda Martinez for the record, Director of Economic Development. Yes, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Albuquerque, we see, and County of Bernaleño, they received the CARES Act funding that was to relieve small businesses because they're, there were the city's 500,000 population and above. We're actually currently working with our grants team to put together an application on behalf of city of Las Cruces that is going to be a twofold. One is going to be specific for, it's called the New Mexico Small Business Continuity Grant, and that's going to be allowed to be deployed for businesses. And the reason for this to be an exception to the anti-donation is because the funding comes directly from CARES Act and for the purposes of business support. So we are working actively right now. We've reached out to city of Albuquerque, County of Bernaleño. We actually had a conversation with the county to make sure that we're supporting each other on the information that we have. And the due date for this grant application is Friday, so we hope to have the final documents by this Wednesday to continue with the process. The disbursement date for the actual funding coming to the, the different municipalities is not known at this point. And then once we get the money, the funding, whatever funding is allocated to the different municipalities, it will be a matter of us going through the defined process and then start this- and then start the disbursement for the different local businesses locally.
Very good. And it looks like Amy Johnson-Bassford would like to make a comment. Amy?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Just to follow up on Dr. Martinez's comments, the state did put out an RFP last week for receiving portions of the CARES Act funding that they received directly for local municipalities and counties that were not eligible to apply directly, which is everyone in New Mexico except Albuquerque and Bernalillo. The funding will cover many of the expenses that we have already incurred for the, the COVID response and what we anticipate we will incur through December thirtieth. And then, as Dr. Martinez said, it also covers the, the Business Continuity Grant Program, which will be developed in her department. So we are anticipating a request of somewhere between thirteen and fifteen million dollars that we will be making to the state this Friday. They are supposed to notify us within ten days, whether or not what they will be funding us. And, but then we would expect to receive a contract sometime after that. We do have the ability to go back and pick up expenses from March first of 2020, and so we may be able to cover some of the expenses that we've given, that the council has allocated to nonprofits in support of small businesses and individuals in our community. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any other questions on it. It's a new and very fast-moving opportunity for us.
Oh, that sounds good. So when you have a little bit more other information for us to share with the council, that'd be great.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Martinez did send out something last week. Didn't you, Dr. Martinez? Do I remember reading something from you about that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, that's.
I informed the entire council that once we have the application specifics done, we, Mr. Mayestas, I'm assuming he'll back on Wednesday, we'll be sharing that with the full council.
Yes, and that, you asked us not to reply all. Thank you, Mr. Donahan, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Martinez, you so much.
And now let's hear from the birthday boy, Counselor Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Ben Como, and the rest of my colleagues on the council for, for that beautiful rendition of Happy Birthday and the half feliz cumpleaños from, Las Mañanitas, from Counselor Flores. I really appreciate it. If I was there, I would have brought a piñata, maybe a Donald Trump piñata. No, I'm just kidding. I did do that for my birthday about four years ago, not knowing where we'd end up, so I'm not gonna go into those waters. But, no, but seriously, it's, it's an honor to have, served with you guys for a couple of years here. I'm so lucky to be turning twenty-six and, and just, you know, enjoying, enjoying my mid twenties. Just kidding, I'm actually thirty-six, but, but I feel twenty-six, and that's what's important. A few things to talk about. First, I, I just, I'm very excited to bring on Mr. Efo Peely to the city of Las Cruces, anxiously awaiting his arrival in, in Las Cruces and his dedication that, that I know he's going to bring to our city. For anyone who's watching out there, I know he, he said that when he touched, he dipped his hand into the Rio Grande, and, and he knew the river was sacred, and he fell in love with the city. And that's the kind of city manager that we're getting in, Efo Peely, if, if everything goes as, according to plan in bringing him on board. So I'm excited for that. I know we were delayed a little bit in our city manager search, but I think myself and the rest of the colleagues and Mayor wanted to get it right. We wanted to have a city manager that was going to bring the skills and expertise and love for the city, and I think, I think we got that in Mr. Efo Peely. I also want to congratulate Angus for being appointed as, as our interim police chief. Congratulations, Miguel. Look forward to having you at the helm of this department until we can find a permanent police chief. But it's exciting to see him in this role. I think he, he will carry us through that transition in, in a very good way. I also did also want to comment on the, the El Paso shooting. You know, we, we grieved for the loss of twenty-three of our neighbors at this time last year. A lot of us were grief-stricken, but I know there was a lot of anger in, in the community. There was a lot of anger inside me at that particular point in time that I, I sometimes didn't know how to express because it was such a racist act, really just predicated on, on the hate for Latino, Mexicano people, and it was so senseless. And it seemed like two weeks after the shooting happened, the news cycle moved on to the next issue of the day. But we, we haven't moved on. We, we still remember, we still acknowledge that there's a problem in this country. The, the attacks on Latino people, on people of color, have not stopped since August third of last year. And I know sometimes people get perhaps tired or get fatigued, fatigued about hearing about race in the news and about hearing, talking, talking about race on our radio shows and newspapers and on social media. But the problem is far from fixed. The problem is continuing, it continues to be here with us. You, you know, you may have seen our neighboring county commissioner, Coit Griffin, just recently made some very inflammatory comments about having peop, black people go back to Africa. That's in the county that neighbors, that neighbors ours to the east, and that is the chair of the county commission. And those types of comments are what drives the type of hateful act and the type of hateful rhetoric that, that ignites people with whatever they have in their head, whether it's, you know, mental illness or whether it's just racism, I'm not sure. But those types of comments and that type of vitriol that is still out there today is going to cause this to happen again. And so we cannot give up, we cannot let our guard down, we cannot forget. Mayor Protam, thank you for the, the, the thought about planting those twenty-three trees. I think that's, that would be a beautiful sentiment that we can offer. But, but I just want to say that, that, apart from memorializing this, there's still a lot of work to do. There's still tons of work to do. With that, I do want to congratulate Counselor Ben Como for being appointed to the Governor's Council on Racial Justice. She's going to be an amazing representative for the city and city, and so congratulations. I know with Counselor Ben Como there, that real work will get done. And so I'm very confident in her, in, in her appointment to that committee and her commitment to representing Las Cruces. I also want to mention again that the Great American Outdoors Act gets signed into Congress tomorrow. That's going to bring some park maintenance funds to places like Carlsbad Caverns National Park, where I think the elevator there hasn't worked for like six or seven years. And the funding to, to get the elevator working would be included in this package, as well as funding for maintenance needs at White Sands National Park. And then with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, we'll be able to not just purchase some of those additional private lands or in holdings for national monuments and national parks and other federal public lands. But we'll also get more money for playgrounds, we'll get more money for baseball fields, we will get more money for all those local close-to-home neighborhood parks that, that we all cherish. I mentioned before that, you know, Pioneer Park, Frenger Park, Young Park, those have all benefited from land and water conservation funding. Most recently, Apolaca Park with nearly a million dollars of investment through that fund. It's a big deal for Las Cruces, and so I'm, I'm happy that that's getting signed tomorrow. And do want to thank all of our representatives who voted in support of that. Representative Torresma was an original cosponsor of that bill, in this bipartisan effort. And so I'm happy that she was one of the, the, the national representatives that led the way in the US House of Representatives to get this important bill passed. Couple other quick things. One is, as a huge Aggie basketball fan, also agree for the loss of Coach Henson. He brought so much pride to our city, he brought so many accolades to our little Las Cruces, to our New Mexico State University during his time here. He is legendary, not to just us, but to, you know, to the national collegiate basketball scene. Everybody, everybody knows him. And so he put the Aggies on the map a long time ago. And in fact, probably one of the reasons we can still recruit as, as good as we do is because of the legacy that Coach Lou Henson left behind. And I know that, that he and his wife weren't just, weren't just in, in the basketball world, they were in our community and they contributed greatly. They always came back to benefit our local nonprofits, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, other organizations where they could lend a hand, where they could lend a handshake and contribute to, to our community. They, they would be the first to show up and the first to be here for, for all the people of Las Cruces, and that means a lot for somebody with that type of national stature. So I think we all collectively grieve for his passing. And then two more things. One is, yeah, I've heard some concerns from students in particular. You may have, fellow counselors, you may have heard as well, but, you know, there's a lot of universities and college campuses that are going virtual, that are going all online learning in this upcoming semester. New Mexico State University, I believe, has maybe a hybrid model of that, but they will have in-person learning in their classrooms, in their facilities. And, and I'm personally very concerned with that because I can just recall that during my time in college and my time on, on the college campus, social distancing is not that easy, right? Students are going to college so that they can interact with each other. In addition to the learning, they learn all those social skills, or they're going through that learning of social skills that prepares them for adulthood. And so it's not so much that I don't have the confidence in our administration or our professors to put together a good plan. But we have young students who are eager to meet people, who are eager to make friends, who are eager to get together. One way they do that is in classes, in classrooms. And so while, while I don't want to take that experience away from any student, I very much fear for the type of just close encounters that are going to be had in, in New Mexico State University classrooms. And so I do want to express some concern about that because that's going to impact our whole community. New Mexico State students will be in our restaurants, they will be, you know, in our community, in our grocery stores. And so, you know, I just, I want to make sure that New Mexico State staff and administration is doing their due diligence to also be able to pull back on that if, if at any time we experience any type of adverse effect from, from those students doing that in-person learning, just as we would with, with our Las Cruces Public Schools. And lastly, speaking of Las Cruces Public Schools, I know that the school board is reconsidering their renaming or their decision to rename Oneyate High School. I, I personally don't agree with their decision. You know, I admire that maybe some members of the school board want to reconsider the vote that they took. But as many of you on this council know, sometimes you make decisions alone, or sometimes you make decisions with the power of your community or colleagues, and they're hard decisions to make, but, but I try to stick by them as best as I can. And I know the school board did the right thing when they originally voted to listen to many of the students who, who asked for a name change. And so I would just hope that they honor that, that they keep to their commitment, and that they contribute to making our community more inclusive, that we listen to youth, we listen to students, and, you know, Oregon Mountain High School, or even Lou Henson High School, sounds to me like a great alternative. So I just want to encourage those members of the school board, if they're listening, to, to keep true to their vote and their commitment to, to listen to some of our young people who stood up to, to do something positive for their, their, their community. With that, I will pass it on. I will just share that I had shared a birthday with my dad. And so after today's council meeting, I'll be lucky to go get to spend some time with him and celebrate his birthday as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wow, that's pretty interesting. So you buy him a gift, he buys you a gift, or you guys just call it even, just say, no?
We, we cancel it out. One year he pays for dinner, the, the next.
All right. Well, happy birthday again. Counselor Abaytastubi?
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope you can hear me. I'm having some internet problems, so I'm on my phone. So I hope it's coming in clear. Great, thank you. I wanted to give a quick update. We had our first meeting of our Quality of Life PRC last week, and I am now going to be the chair of it with Counselor Vasquez's vice chair. So we will be looking for three community members within the next month to help fill this PRC. And they need to be within education, health, or, or science and arts, have a, a lens for those areas. An update with our community schools, the state level had pulled back on funding about one point eight million. That did end up impacting us a bit with our community organi, community schools coordinators. However, they were able at the state level to find funding, and so there will be funding for the MacArthur Community School Coordinator. And so that is really good to hear. As we know, with the current situation, our community schools are more important than ever, and they're going to hopefully help. They already help provide resources to many of our community that have gaps in, in basic services and care, and they have special needs. And so this will be very important, I think, in the coming days, and as we, we see that there's still going to be a great need for a lot of families. I want to thank our staff at the Branigan Library and Quality of Life for all the great activities that they've been producing lately. Lots of kids' kits that they've been handing out. They've been quite exciting. And even today, I know that they had so many that they ran out. So thank you for all the work that they've been doing, trying to find unique ways to keep kids engaged and give them something a little bit extra and fun to do. I did want to say thank you to Counselor Vasquez for bringing up his concerns with NMSU. I actually have that written down on my notes today. I'm very excited to see that NMSU will be able to have the capacity for testing for COVID at their facilities, and I do hope that we can quickly partner with them to be able to have that resource for the community as a whole, and not just for the campus, if there's ways that we can do that. But as we know, when the students get together, if there is any sort of outbreaks, I am very concerned about our businesses, especially along university, for having the potential of having higher infection rates or, or potential for that, since they're going to be right next to it, and there's going to be a lot of crossover, I'm sure, with students frequenting those places. So whatever supports or even education that perhaps we need to give to those businesses on just safety tips and tools, I think that would be really great for us to be able to at least give out that education. Thank you, Mayor, for speaking the names of the El Pasoans and Juarez's lost to the shooting last year. And I am glad that we're able to remember them by their name, and I know that it's just heartbreaking for those families. And it's senseless acts, and I'm glad that we are able to continue our work and have people invested in preventing and stopping racism. And so thank you to my colleagues here who are also committed to that. And I think that is it. I guess, good luck to families in the coming weeks. I know school's going to be very tough. Every family has unique needs, and starting school online is, it is difficult for a lot of different people. And there's not, not every family has the same tools or same access. And so it's going to be very interesting to see what happens, but just, I guess, good luck in the coming weeks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to, probably one of the more important items is, I know you were going to reach out to our auditor about the forensic accountant's report and where that stood. Deeply, continue to be deeply concerned with how long it's taken from it getting to the auditor and then to the New Mex, to our Attorney General's office. I just want to stay, I just want to continue to remind you and my colleagues about receiving some sort of, of decision from the auditor's office as it relates to that report and next steps.
Yes, Mayor Protam, I did reach out to him. I just, I didn't want to put him on the spot. I just said, I hope, you know, we'll let it run its course and hope for the best. And, you know, I, I know that they really can't discuss a whole lot about any investigation. So I did just let him know that, you know, we're, we're thinking of him and, you know, just. So I did just let him know that, you know, we're thinking of him and, you know, just hoping for the best.
Mayor, I believe Counselor Abaytus Stube raised her hand.
Yeah, I saw that. Counselor Abaytus Stube, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yes, actually, to follow up, since this is a newer process, what is generally considered appropriate time to give back those types of reports?
You talking about the state auditor?
Or is it? Yes.
Well, you know, I think this is an unusual report because of the volume of documents. And, you know, a lot of times they can act on things, you know, relatively quick, within 30, 45 days. But I think this is so, it's huge, you know? And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what, you know, what they're, it looks like Jennifer probably wants me to keep quiet. Yes, Jennifer?
No, thank you, Mayor. I just want you to know that the, it is the volume of documents. We have, I think it's a 76 or so-page report, and it's 500 pages of attachments. The review equaled about 3 million documents that was included in our report. So that is what they are having to review. So I just want you to know, it is, it's a high volume.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, David, you have your city manager's report?
Yeah, just some quick items, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm going to turn it over to Francisco Payadis, who's going to give our jobs of the week. We didn't advertise it at the beginning of the meeting, so we're going to do it now. But starting next week, it will be at the beginning of the meeting. It was a slight coordination issue between us and the city clerk's office, so he's going to do that now. And then I have three other items after that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, David. As David mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we are joining the jobs of the, we're starting the jobs of the week, which is an effort that we're carrying along with New Mexico Workforce Connections. So there's going to be someone from the New Mexico Workforce Connections. So just as we have your bed of the week, they're going to be advertising your jobs of the week. These are jobs that are positions that are open or that have been recently been open, and we can advertise them here and at the beginning of council very quickly. So today I am going to be showing your first jobs of the week.
I like that, that's good.
Just let me know if you can see my screen.
Yes, now we can.
Excellent, then, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, the jobs of the week. So amongst all the jobs of the week that we have opened for this week from New Mexico Workforce Connections is an election specialist with the Doñana County. This position will be open until filled, and there's actually 35 positions open in different other fields along with in Doñana County. So this is just one of the positions that is open. But there's also 35 other positions that have been advertised that are currently hiring in Doñana County. The second one is an auto technician. In Las Cruces, auto doctors are looking for an auto technician. This is one position and it's going to be open until filled. There's also certified nursing assistants, the PRNs at the Mesilla Valde hospice. This is going to be open until filled, and they have two positions open along with them. There's also going to be some solar sales consultants positions open with solar smart living, and there's also going to be five positions, and these are going to be open until filled. There's also a position for a caregiver at the haciendas at Grace Village, and this is going to be open until filled. There are seven positions available for that. Again, this is just a snippet of all the different positions that are available for this week, fresh out of the open jobs. And for a full list of jobs, internships, and volunteer opportunities, please visit employnm.com. Along this information, we're going to be advertising also the New Mexico Workforce Connections information. The phone number is 575-524-6250. They're located at 226 Alameda Boulevard and Las Cruces, New Mexico, 88005. And the webpage is again, employnm.com. So whenever you have, as the council meeting, we're going to be advertising or showing these jobs fresh out of the open, fresh jobs of the week for you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bayades. Let me just ask, though, how difficult is it to also include the positions open at the City of Las Cruces to be added with this? Is that something you think we can do?
That's certainly something we can do, Mr. Mayor. We can definitely advertise those as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we'll work to add newly added positions, not all vacancies, but we'll, each week we'll add new positions.
From the city as well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because, okay, great, thanks. I like it, that's really good, that's good.
One other items that I had, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be quick, is David Maestas is out through tomorrow. He'll be back in the office on Wednesday. Correction, Mr. Mayor, I failed my test. The agenda setting is at 1:00 next week. And then the city staff, thanks to Adrian Guzman in our communications office, we are evaluating other Zoom public participation tools where we can allow other, the general public in while ensuring that we have safety measures in place. We have a couple of options. We're going to actually probably ask you, Mayor, and Counselor Gonder, and maybe Counselor Sorg to participate in a little test exercise after we've tested them because it impacts how you operate in turning on your microphone and off and so forth. So we want to use you as part of our test cases as well. So more to come, we hope to have that done in the next couple of weeks.
Sounds like you're about to say guinea pig, but I guess.
Test cases.
Okay.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, this is Sorg.
Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Counselor Incomo, that we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned, it's 4:16 PM. Okay, thanks.